Good evening, everybody. We're going to call the meeting to order. Welcome to our meeting this evening. We're going to have a roll call first by our City Clerk Kathy Valdez.
The record shall reflect that all members are present.
If you'll all rise and join us, Councilmember Green is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in saluting our nation's flag. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To start our meeting off, we're going to, please join me in a moment of silence to honor Lori Kay, the victim of the senseless tragedy in the Poway synagogue shooting that occurred on April 27th. We haven't held a council meeting since then, and the Kay family, the synagogue community, and all the residents of Poway are in our thoughts this evening. So if we just pause for a minute and think of that family. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. I'd like to remind everyone that the Vista Municipal Code requires members of the public to observe order and decorum at the meeting and to conduct themselves in a courteous manner. The ordinance was adopted to allow for public input and to facilitate city business without disruption of our meeting. Applause is appropriate for the items listed under the presentation portion of the agenda only. Attendees should remain seated during the meeting, and persons needing to stand are requested to step outside the city council chambers where video and audio of the meeting are playing there. This is also listed on your agenda cover sheet. Students wishing to receive credit for attending this evening's meeting must stay for a minimum of one hour. However, we ask that you stay for the completion of an item rather than leaving in the middle of a discussion. When you're ready to leave, you may ask one of the sheriff deputies or a staff member in the back of the room to sign your paper. Addressing the city council, to speak for three minutes on an item on the agenda, please fill out a speaker slip with the number of the item you want to speak on and give it to the city clerk secretary. Speaker slips are available just outside the council chambers, I think, on the table out there. So next, we'll have approval of our agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes to the agenda this evening.
And we did have a closed session. Our city attorney, Darryl Piper, will bring us out of our closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council met this evening to discuss item CS1 on this evening's closed session agenda. No action was taken that is required to be reported at this time.
Okay, and we have three presentations this evening, and I will come down there and do them. I will, do you guys, do you want to join me tonight? Or you don't, you guys want to join me down there? You don't have to, but you can if you want to. Get together in the mask, or if you want to. It's always nice to have everybody join me, so. Our first proclamation, Kuna, is he here? There he is. He's coming, okay. Please come forward to receive the proclamation. This is Kuna Methusme, and he's Public Works Director, and I'm going to read their Public Works proclamation here. I'm going to give this to you. You can come back here. Oops, I need this part. Give you that, and I'll read it. So whereas, "The year 2019 marks the 59th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Public works services provided by the city of Vista are an integral part of our residents' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works practices such as sewer, storm drain, park maintenance, facility maintenance, tree trimming, graffiti abatement, street repair, fleet maintenance, and solid waste collection. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of our community greatly depends on these services, the 2019 American Public Works Association theme, it starts here, represents the many facets of modern civilization that grow out of the efforts put forth by public works professionals and the numerous ways public works contribute to the quality of life of Vista residents. Whereas public works projects and services provide quality of life and social benefits and are one of the basic elements of our civilized society and our nation's economic growth and competitiveness, now therefore the mayor and members of our city council do hereby proclaim the week of May 19, 2019, to May 25, 2019, as Public Works Week in the city of Vista." So congratulations on that. Are we doing pictures, or no? Yes. We're going to do a picture. Wait, can we do a picture? Be in the middle. This, or paperwork? Do you want me to move this? Do you want to move the microphone, too? What, do you want me to move? Microphone, paper, or... If you do this, make it pretty. Yeah, okay. There. Now we're good. Okay, space for a minute. Okay, and our next proclamation is Wave Waterpark Day. And accepting that proclamation will be Assistant Waterpark Managers Anizia Chavez and Huntington Wozniak. You can make it pretty. Why we read it, okay. Whereas June 30, 2019, marks the 25th anniversary of the opening of the city of Vista's Wave Waterpark. And whereas owned and operated by the city of Vista, the Wave Waterpark is popular for its lazy river, the adrenaline pumping slide tower, the Flow Rider, and the Spray Park attraction. Didn't Joe ride that in the middle of the winter, one of those things? Yes, I remember that. The adrenaline pumping slide tower, was it? Yes. The Flow Rider and the Spray Park attraction. On average, more than 82,000 visitors spend time at the Wave Waterpark each summer. The Wave Waterpark also serves as the home pool for the Vista High School and Rancho Buena Vista High School's swimming and water polo teams. Whereas the Wave Waterpark employs approximately 200 part-time employees every summer, and I know you guys, the kids always apply, the high school kids apply and work there, a lot of them in the summer. The Wave Waterpark offers swim lessons, splash camp, junior lifeguards, CPR lessons, a scout badge program, Flow Rider and water polo classes, CPR and babysitting classes, and the mermaid program. And the Wave Waterpark programs such as splash camp has grown over the last 15 years from approximately 25 children every week to about 120 children every week of camp. Whereas for 12 consecutive years, the Wave Waterpark has been the recipient of the internationally recognized Stargardt Elite Five-Star Aquatic Safety Award. So now therefore, the mayor and the members of the Vista City Council do hereby congratulate the Wave Waterpark on its 25th anniversary and recognize the importance of the Wave Waterpark is, recognize the importance of the Wave Water, oh my gosh. Start that over again, one more time. The Wave Waterpark on its 25th anniversary and recognize the Wave Waterpark is to the city of Vista and surrounding communities and hereby, it's written that way, that's why I'm reading it wrong. Okay, that isn't what it says. We'll start one more time. The Wave Waterpark on its 25th anniversary recognizes the importance of the Wave Waterpark to the city of Vista and surrounding communities and hereby proclaims Sunday, June 30, 2019, as Wave Waterpark Day in the city of Vista. So congratulations to the Wave Waterpark. That's a great. Congratulations. I'm just going to, I'm going to call up, wait a minute, where's my page? So I'm going to call up the Sandy O'Conne Sheriff's Department, the Vista Station update. Sheriff's Captain Greg Reilersdam, who's back here, is going to provide the update. This week is National Police Week. In 1961, President John F. Kennedy signed a bill designated May 15 as Peace Officers' Memorial Day. Peace Officers Memorial Day and Police Week pay tribute to the local, state, and federal law enforcement officers who serve and protect us with courage and dedication. Captain Reilersdam wants to take this opportunity to thank you, we want to take this opportunity to thank you, the deputies that are here tonight, and the rest of the members of the sheriff's department for your service. We appreciate you so very much for the city of Vista. So come on down, and you can give your report. I don't think you're on yet. Put you...
Now I'm on. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the council. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to spend a couple of minutes with you tonight and give you an update since our last visit. We have been hovering around an 18, 16 to 18 crime rate for the last six months, and I'm happy to report that our most current numbers are 16.6, which is the lowest that we've had in Vista since 1995. And as you can see, the trend continues to go down. We keep our fingers crossed that it continues to go down by the work that's done in the city, by the deputies and the staff. The numbers since our last time, like I said, started, we were at about an 18 last time. We've been down in the 17s, and now we're at 16.6. As we look through and see what the issues are right now in the city as far as crime and what we're looking at, the big red flag for us is theft from vehicles, and the fact that that is our big issue right now is a good thing as far as I'm concerned. That's something that we can have a positive effect on by working with the community. Our average thefts from vehicle are about 35 a month, and you can see that we've gone above that line in December and February and March and January as well, and then we've dropped that down here in April. I wanted to talk about some of the things that we've uncovered as we go through our statistics and our crime reports. 63% of all vehicle thefts, or theft from vehicles in the city of Vista are taken from unlocked vehicles. People are leaving things of value inside unlocked vehicles, and crimes of opportunity exist for people that are walking by and looking in vehicles. When you combine the other, which is the 13% there, and other is essentially anything taken out of a truck bed with windows down, and suspect will come by and force their way in through an open window, cutting their way into a convertible. We've had a couple of those where things have been cut and then objects have been taken out. That adds up to 76%. 76% of all of the theft from vehicles in the city of Vista are not forced entry. And more than half of the things that are taken are things of value, things that are important to people, that they leave on the seats of their vehicles, purses, wallets, backpacks, computers, iPads. We've had a couple of sets of golf clubs taken. It's amazing that people leave those things of value in the car for people to come by and just take. So I really want to make sure that the public knows that secure your personal belongings, do not make them available to other people that want to come by and make you a victim of crime. If you lock your vehicle and you either secrete the valuables in the trunk or take them inside the house with you, we could probably lower the crime rate even more. 22% of the thefts from vehicles are license plates, and I wanted to cover that as well. When plates are stolen, those plates are used in the commission of other crimes. Folks either use those to, criminals use those to cold plate stolen vehicles, and what that literally is, is I take a license plate off a Ford truck, and I go steal another Ford truck, and I put the plate that I've stolen on the truck. The truck's going to get reported stolen, but in a large number of cases, folks don't pick up the phone and call the sheriff's department to report that their plates were stolen off of their vehicle. A lot of times, it's the front plate, and people don't notice it. When we see a vehicle driving down the road that has a plate with no tabs on it, that's why we're making traffic stops. And usually, we're recovering stolen vehicles, or a trend that we're now seeing are criminal gangs that are coming from the LA area, LA and Orange County. They're renting vehicles, and they're cold plating those vehicles and committing crimes in the San Diego region. So we've had a couple of instances where we've had groups come in, and the sledgehammer series earlier this year where criminals were coming in, using a sledgehammer to break into businesses, glass plated front entries of businesses and taking items, not only in Vista, but many of the other cities in North County. We had that series, we've had the cellphone thefts where folks are going in and basically going into a Verizon store or an Apple store, any electronics thing, and basically flooding that with folks that go in and steal items and run out. And when we track them down and arrest them, many times they're in the rental cars with those cold plates. So if your plates are getting stolen, please call us and report that. It's as important to us as a stolen vehicle report, because we put those into the system. And then if we run the plate in the field, that's going to be a traffic stop for us, because that's somebody that's in possession of stolen property. There've been a couple of circumstances that have happened in the last six months. Patrol calls, one recently, was recently in the news. We had a 15-year-old autistic girl that left home, and, which ended up being a large-scale search and rescue call-out for us, the sheriff's department. Fortunately, we found her within 24 hours. Just today, we had another 12-year-old girl that has the functioning level of a four-year-old walk away after taking the trash down to the curb, and again, we were very fortunate to find her within about 30 minutes. But one of the things that was discussed at the conclusion of those with the parents was the Sheriff's Take Me Home Program. The sheriff's department sponsors a program which is a regional photo base system that's hosted by the sheriff's department, designed to assist us during contacts with community members with disabilities. And we're talking about people that don't have the ability to communicate where they live to us. They may have autism, dementia, Alzheimer's, or some other medical condition that prevents them from communicating with us. The Take Me Home Program is a proactive program where a caregiver can bring in a family member, a friend, or a client, and put them into this system, and we get high-quality photos. And then when we come to a call like the 15-year-old autistic girl that we ran, the search and rescue operation with, when we got there, we did not have good-quality photos, and mom didn't have good-quality photos for us. So we're really relying on word of mouth at that point when photos work better than anything else. If we have a photograph, we can put a press release out, we can put a be on the lookout, which is what we actually ended up using to find her. A postal carrier found her the next day in a neighboring trailer park, but without that picture, we would have only had a description. And unfortunately, that's not really helpful when we're putting out descriptions mostly in a helicopter that you can't hear the announcement on, right? So the Take Me Home Program works two ways. If deputies find some, if deputies come into contact with someone who can't communicate, and personally, it's happened for me several times, more on the dementia side, where I run into someone in the middle of the night, walking down the street, and they're recounting their time in World War II, and you're having a conversation with them, and it's breaking your heart because they don't have identification on them, and we want to get them home, but we're not able to get them home because we don't know where they live. I've lived and worked in smaller communities where we get to know those folks. Vista is a larger community, and sometimes that's difficult. But we can search the database if we have pictures of folks that are in Vista that are part of that program, and we can match up a face, we have an address, we have emergency contact info. It's a great, great resource for us. Like I said, the other side of it is, somebody goes missing, we have access to photos immediately, so we can do that. You can enroll your family members, your friends, or your clients by coming either to the sheriff's department, your local station, or contacting our crime prevention specialists who can help you enroll in that program. About a month and a half ago, the Board of Supervisors recognized two of our senior volunteer folks, Frank Aerosmith and Jim Baines. They were out conducting vacation checks, which is one of their duties, and they were flagged down by a manager at a local park who had not seen a resident for several days. These gentlemen went to the trailer and found the resident inside. He'd been lying on the floor for three days. They were able to arrange for an ambulance to come and began administering medical treatment to him until they got there, which they're trained to do as part of the program. And I shudder to think what could have happened if the manager hadn't taken notice of the fact that somebody, he hadn't seen the gentleman for several days. I want to tie that into our You Are Not Alone program, another department program that we offer. It's free to those that live within the jurisdiction of the sheriff's department, and I'm sure that other agencies have something similar. What we do with this program is we, just like the other program, register someone. Usually, it's for elderly folks that are infirmed or otherwise at home alone. They don't have family in the area, they may not have friends. We have them in our system. We make proactive calls Monday through Friday, usually before 10 o'clock in the morning. If we can't get a hold of somebody, we check, when we get them on the phone, we check in with them and have a conversation with them. Oftentimes, it's some of the only social contact someone gets. And this is something that is near and dear to the senior volunteers. They own this program with all their heart. It is a very rewarding experience for them. During the holidays, we actually put together baskets, and we take them out to all of our Yana clients, and it's just a, the deputies, it's interesting, when I first got up here, I said, I'd like the deputies to go out and assist with that. And it's not always easy to convince a 22, 24-year-old kid that this is a great opportunity until they actually do it. And it's interesting, because this year was, or in December was the second year that we've done that, or that I've been involved with that, and they were fighting. They were fighting to be the three deputies that got to do it. So it was really special for me, and special for them, too. And this year, we went to the extended effort of taking pictures. We took pictures last year, but this year, we actually printed those pictures up, put them in frames, and took them back to the Yana volunteers. And it's neat when you go and visit those folks, and it's sitting right there on their mantle. It's a really special thing for them, so. The Yana, the way the Yana program works, like I said, is we reach out via the phone several times a week, two or three times a week with a client, and have a conversation with them. Once a week, one of our senior patrols actually goes out and spends about an hour with the client, just to have a conversation. And there, we train our senior volunteers to look for objective signs of potential harm that's coming to those folks, whether it's, you can learn a lot in a conversation. And we've had some instances where we've had to steer our crime prevention folks, as well as our fraud folks, to be involved in a relationship with a client who has developed a friendship with somebody over the phone or online, and there's elder abuse occurring, financial elder abuse, or other kinds of things, self-neglect, someone's not having their needs met. In those circumstances, the seniors, senior volunteer program works hand-in-hand with adult protective services to make sure that we get someone the help that they need. On that note, the senior volunteer program with the county, or with the sheriff's department is a wonderful, wonderful thing. We have 32 members currently working with us at the Vista Station, and we are always looking for more. And so, since I have the wonderful opportunity to sit here and be recorded and hopefully reach out to some of the folks in the audience, I'd just like to say that if you really have a desire to give back to the community, we're looking for people over the age of 50 that would like to volunteer and contribute time to help the community. And the thing about the SVP is, if you want to do it in Fallbrook, because you're a Fallbrook resident, we're happy to have you in Fallbrook, too. Every station has a contingent of senior volunteer patrol. We have 32 of Vista. I'd love for it to be much larger than that. I'd love to have members across the community that would be willing to come in and basically give back. And by giving back, we're talking about vacation checks. If you go on vacation, you can call the sheriff's department, and we will schedule a car to go out and check at random intervals your house and make sure that it hasn't been broken into while you're on vacation. We have the Yana program where we have people on the phones in the morning calling, and then other folks out making visits to seniors. There are just so many opportunities for us to use volunteers, and I'm not going to sit here and tell you that it is not a wonderful thing to have an unpaid asset that supplements our numbers. These folks, the only thing that we can pay them is our gratitude and our thanks, and so we make an effort to do that at every time that's available to us. So I don't think that I have any seniors in the audience, but if I do, senior volunteers, thank you very much again. And that's all I have for you. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Franklin.
Thanks for the update, Captain. Thanks to you and the deputies for all your good work, and we're proud of the effort that you've made to reduce crime in Vista. And I wanted to ask you, since you brought up the fact that, I'm usually the guy that opens up the door. I walk out, and I'm in the front of the driveway, just in time to hear the helicopter say, stay in your home, there's a dangerous person on the loose. I would like, and we've talked about this before, I'd like to direct the city, if we need to agendize it, let's agendize it, but I'd like to direct the city within six months to come up with a text message program so that any individual who volunteers to receive text message alerts from the city, the sheriff's department specifically, could receive those. And I was thinking, wouldn't it be a great idea if our neighborhood watch signs would include the information on how to be subscribed to those? Social media is always a buzz when the helicopters are over us with the same question, what is the helicopter saying?
Yes.
And if individuals had the ability to volunteer for those, then, is there any kind of program anywhere in the county that the sheriff is utilizing for text message alerts right now?
Well, we have Alert San Diego, but that's used on a, on really a larger scale where we have a natural, I mean, emergency, or we have a fire, or something to that effect. It's not always deployed at a local level when we have something like that. But I do have good news. We have new helicopters which are being delivered, and I've been assured that the audio on those is fantastic. So I'll be the first one to test and verify, because I've been extremely frustrated, too. I live in sheriff's jurisdiction, and you really try hard to hear what they're saying. But I'd also say that if you are sitting there and you can't hear the helicopter, you can pick up the phone and call the non-emergency line and ask what's going on as well. Most people don't do that, and obviously, if that happened, it would impact the non-emergency side of the house. But yeah, that's certainly something we could take a look at.
So I'd like to see the city partner with the sheriff's department within six months, if we could make a plan to do this. I don't think it would be that hard. I get text alerts from an organization that I'm a member of, and daily letting me know, you know, things that are going on within that organization. There's a lot of good services third-party that we, and if we collected the ZIP code, and we made that the one piece of information we had for folks, then we'd know what ZIP code they're in, so we could, you know, make quadrants of the city and alert people where it was geographically appropriate.
Okay.
So if we could work together to do that.
No, we had a, city managers had a presentation from the sheriff probably about six months ago regarding the 911 system and the ability of the emergency broadcast system for text alerts and things like that. And I think they, technology-wise, there are a little bit of ways. I think they're about three years away from designing a system that's more robust to today's technology. They're looking at that, but we can have other conversations.
Yeah, I know, you're speaking to reverse 911, right?
No, I'm speaking to the ability for people to text 911.
Text 911, yeah.
For them to send out the text from the system. Yeah, not reverse 911, though.
Like I say, there are good third-party options out there that are very cost-effective that would enable us to be in communication, and it would also perhaps enable us, on an infrequent basis, to share information about locking your car and taking valuables out of it. And this other thing I wanted to ask you is, what communication, other than presenting to us, of course, I want to ask the sheriff's department to post about those things. I think you may have already done that.
Yes, we do. We post, obviously, we post on Nextdoor. Our crime prevention specialists, Jason and Henry, talk about it at every meeting they go to, and send out frequent updates. It's not important to people until it happens to them, and then it's important to people. And so when a deputy goes out and takes a report, they also remind folks, and it's toeing a line, because you don't want to, you don't want to be lecturing, but you want to say, hey, we need your help to prevent you from being a victim as well.
The theft motto seems to be the number-one thing I hear as far as crimes, so it's definitely something folks are alert to right now.
Well, Kathy, I'll tell you, I came in getting prepped tonight, and the first thing I did is looked down and said, uh-oh, my iPad. I either left it on top of the car in the parking lot, or it's on the front seat. And I ran down there, and sure enough, so here I am telling you how terrible it is to leave your valuables in there, and we all do it.
We all do. Thanks, Captain.
Sure.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Captain, for this informational report. Again, to reiterate, that you, because you brought it up, the helicopter, you can't hear them, can't understand them. And I all... And I always get text messages and phone calls, not just from friends and neighbors, but constituents, asking me, "What is going on?" I did pick up the phone and call the non-emergency number, only to have her tell me, "Don't go outside, there's somebody in your neighborhood that we're looking for." So I support the deputy mayor's ask. I think there's got to be a better way, because I know that, I live on a cul-de-sac, and one day was overhead, nobody could hear, and we were all outside, and it was one of those times where they're telling you to stay inside.
We're either telling you to look for somebody, or we're telling you to stay inside.
Right, and either way, we can't.
So I get it, and if you can't hear it.
We can't tell, and I appreciate that the new helicopters hopefully will have a better audio system. But I think there is a better way that we can do this. This is 2019.
I agree.
We can do a better job, so I look forward to having that conversation.
That's certainly something that I could remind my folks of, too. If we're in a neighborhood, and we have a patrol team looking, ideally, the person that initiates that is the patrol supervisor, but if the patrol supervisor is right in the middle of this thing, then I need to remind them, and we can also certainly talk to the watch commander down at the communications center, who's a lieutenant, and say, "Maybe this is something that we can work on doing," especially when we're going to be making notifications.
Right. So if we can have a conversation here at the city with city staff about different ways that we might be able to better inform our community, that would be great. But I also want to say, thank you. I do ride-alongs frequently with the Sheriff's Department, and I try to do different days, different times, so that I can see what's happening in our community 24/7. I go out on Monday nights, and Tuesday afternoons, and Saturday night, Sunday morning, whatever. And I want to thank you for that, and I know it's probably not easy, you know, if you draw the short straw, and you're stuck with a council member on your shift. But it's very eye-opening for us to be able to see what's going on in our city at any given time, and to know what resources that we need to have for our Sheriff's Department, what better resources we can provide for our community. So I just want to say thank you for the great job that you're all doing, and keep up the good work. So thank you.
Thank you.
Captain, does the Sheriff's Department still take advantage of Nixle?
Yes.
For the community?
Yep, Nixle, Twitter. And we've talked about doing the Twitter notifications and that kind of thing. It's having somebody actually available to do it when all hands are on deck. And so, but that's a conversation.
Councilmember Green.
Yes, thank you so much, Captain Reilersdam. Appreciate it. I definitely support the text alert system as well. I receive text every morning from my church, I get texts from my kids' PTA, I mean, any, I mean, if they can text me to bring in paper plates for the Teacher Appreciation Week luncheon, we should be able to send text messages to people if there's an emergency in their area. So, a simple thing of, hey, this is the City of Vista Crime Alert Hotline, we can post it on all of our social media, text CRIME to 5250, or whatever, and you're automatically signed to text CRIME plus your ZIP code, something like that. I would assume that the technology is out there, so I think between the three of us here, you can definitely hear a green light on that. Also, thank you for a fantastic report, 16.60% crime rate, huge, so congratulations.
We were lower than Santee.
Wow, yeah. I mean, they got pickup trucks, and shotguns, and dogs, and stuff out there, so congratulations on that. Also, cold plates, I had no clue. It was such a big thing. I'm glad that you brought it to our attention. I'll post on my social media, hey, if your license plate gets stolen, report it. It's important, that's a big thing. I didn't realize people were out there doing that, and, you know, think like a criminal. Also, Take Me Home program, love the idea of it. I remember you guys with the photos, that was, do you have any photos of the girl that's missing? No, nothing, so that's pretty awesome. And then, the last thing, what else did I write down? Oh, bacon, sorry. Senior Volunteer Patrol, we pay you in bacon with an annual appreciation breakfast, so if any seniors are watching and thinking, "Man, I just need something to be on that patrol," all you can eat bacon once a year. Join our Senior Volunteer Patrol. That's all I got. Thank you again for your report, amazing.
Councilmember Contreras.
Thank you so much, Captain Reilersdam. You know, it's just, it's really good to hear that we're making progress here in Vista in lowering our crime rate, and, you know, I'm 100% in accordance with the rest of the council, in that it would be really great to have some kind of text alert system, not only for law enforcement, but also, you know, tie it into any kind of emergency, whether it be, you know, a fire emergency, or whatever the case, so that way, we could really start getting this information out to folks here in Vista. But one of the, one of the things I wanted to ask is if, you know, we've heard a lot about the vehicle thefts, you know, I personally have heard a ton in certain areas of the city. So I wanted to ask, one, is there certain hotspots in the city, or is it just kind of, we're everywhere?
We, actually, and so, one of the things we looked at, auto theft has always been a problem in Vista. And when I got here as a lieutenant, we talked about the older model Hondas, and Acuras, and those type of things. It's kind of moving to trucks and trailers at this point, but the numbers are down significantly, actually. It's going to come back, and it happens oftentimes in the north, in your district, and in Councilman Green's district. And again, a lot of those end up being crimes of opportunity as well, folks that get up in the morning, and go out and start up their vehicle to warm it up, and go back inside to grab their cup of coffee, or leave the keys in it as a regular operating procedure, or start the vehicles without keys. There are a lot of different reasons why it happens, and then we just have those that are just stolen. We have people that are teaching other people how to go out into the community and steal vehicles. That is a, and that's not going to go away anytime soon. But yeah, we definitely have more stolen in the north than we do in the south. And, you know, I hear it when I roll in in the morning, and when I'm going home at night, I have a radio on my car, and I'll hear somebody report it, and as soon as it's reported, every car, we don't just dispatch somebody to take a report. When a reporting party calls in, we get a vehicle description, it's broadcast to everybody right now, because the best opportunity to catch someone in that car is going to be right now, after it was stolen. If it's a cold stolen, and by that I mean it was taken overnight, or two days ago, it's interesting, sometimes we get calls two weeks later, "My car was stolen within the last two weeks." Okay, well, some people don't drive every car that they have every day, so, but those, yeah, so it is happening up in the north, and that's where a lot of our vehicle burglaries are occurring, too.
So, would you say that these vehicle thefts are occurring in areas where people are maybe parking their vehicle further away from where they live, or that's not really a factor?
No, it's stolen right out of driveways.
Okay.
So, I mean, there certainly are some that are parked on the street, down the street, but nothing that we're seeing a pattern, where they're, you know, they're parking in a dirt lot around the corner type thing, and that's where all the cars are stolen from. Nothing like that.
Nothing that easy.
Yeah. No, unfortunately, otherwise, we'd have, we'd have people watching that lot.
Okay, well, yeah, I just wanted to dig in a little bit more as to if there is, you know, geographic significance in the distribution of these thefts. But, you know, I also, because that obviously isn't the full 16.6% of the crime, so I wanted to see if you have information where we can drill down a little bit more as to what else is comprising.
Crime Mapping, crimemapping.com. Everyone has access to it on the internet, crimemapping.com, and you can go in and actually look at what's happening in your community, or any other community. Crime rate is a factor of violent crime combined with property crime. And our violent crime is in the single digits, and our property crime is in the double digits. So, when I, you know, I look back over the last couple of months, you know, violent crime's a 3.8, added to a 13.8 property crime, and that was last month. Our violent crime is anywhere between a 2.0 and a 4.2 over the last seven or eight months, but our property crime goes from, you know, 12.5 all the way up to 15. It just, and so, property crime encompasses, you know, anything of value that's stolen, cars, property in vehicles, stolen property. Shoplifting, any theft is coming out of the property crime side of it, and then crimes against persons are the violent crime.
Which would include something like domestic violence?
Yes, domestic violence, assault, aggravated assaults, homicides, simple batteries, it runs the gamut. So, crimes against persons is one rate, and then it's added to the property crime rate, for a total crime rate.
So have we, have we seen the violent crime rate go down significantly as well? Do you have the numbers on that?
You know, I don't have, this month, we went, we went from a 4.2 to a 3.5 to a 3.8 over the last couple of months. And domestic violence is something that's factored into that. Domestic violence is an issue in the City of Vista, as it is everywhere else. It's, it's difficult, because I get to see those reports made and arrests written, and they're not always prosecuted. When there are two people involved in a circumstance, the district attorney does not always prosecute those. And there are times where we go back to the same places, unfortunately. But when we do those, we make sure that when we write the follow-up reports, we kind of say, "We've been here, and you, and here are the associated crime reports," so they can see that this is not a problem that, you know, is a one-time existence. It's frustrating for me. It's frustrating for me, it's frustrating for the people that work for me, it's frustrating for our department as a whole. I'm sure it's frustrating for the DA's office, too, but most importantly, I can only imagine what goes through a victim's mind when they have, they have the courage to pick up the phone and call us for help, and we come, and we can only help them for a 24 to 72-hour period.
Yeah, and you know, the ride-along that I did, that seemed to be a significant number of the calls were domestic violence. One last thing that I wanted to ask, because homelessness has been such a hot topic, just in our region, has there, what, how does the homeless population here in Vista factor into our crime rate? Do you see, I don't really know how to ask the question, but...
Yeah, it's a great question, and I wish I had a great answer for you. I, it would not surprise me that it affects our crime rate greatly.
Would that be like on the property side?
On the property side, yeah. We certainly deal with the crimes of violence, when there are fights, and we have those every day. But when there are crimes of opportunity, and there are people out, out at all hours of the day and night, and there are opportunity there, people take advantage of opportunity. That's why, if there's one thing that I can get across tonight, it's secure your property. Secure your property, and whenever possible, lock it away, lock it away from the wandering eye.
Okay, thank you so much. You know, we all really appreciate all the work that the department does, and, you know, we still have more work to do, especially with bridging the gap between the community and the Sheriff's Department, but I think that the community is really excited to have some more opportunity to bring these two entities together, so that way, we can positively continue to affect our crime rate, and have it continue to go down. So thank you so much, and to the deputies.
I'm thrilled to be the one that's here.
Deputy Mayor Franklin.
I just wanted to provide a thought on touring the homeless encampments. There are large numbers of property that very obviously have been liberated from their owners. Lots and lots of bicycles. I was amazed how many bicycles, and they didn't look like they'd been purchased legitimately. All kinds of items that looked like they were out of people's backyards. So there's, our attention to this issue is a major driver of small crime. That really affects people's feeling about the city that they live in, and so, our work to try and solve the problem is going to have a appreciable impact for our residents, and hopefully, we'd see fewer property crimes committed that they're victims of.
Councilmember Rigby.
I just wanted to follow up on something that Councilmember Contreras asked about, and that was the domestic violence. Many, many, many years ago, when I worked at the Domestic Violence Restraining Order Clinic, when I was with the Volunteer Lawyer Program, the presiding judge mandated that the repeat couples would go to counseling. She mandated that they go to counseling. I remember trying, a couple came in, or a woman came in, and she wanted to do a restraining order, and it turned out, between them, they'd already had 22 restraining orders back and forth on each other. Previously, they weren't prosecuting any of the cases, but it became clear that there was an issue that needed to be addressed. We can't just have people continuing to fight, file papers against each other, and then go home and start the cycle all over again. Is the mandated counseling no longer happening?
Well, I would imagine, I don't know. I would imagine that for them to be mandated to do anything, that case has to go to the court. So if the case is not issued, the case never gets to court.
Do we know why they're not being issued to court?
I can only say that based on the complaint rejections that I read, the district attorney is electing not to go forward on several domestic violence cases. I don't, I don't know what their, I'm not here to speak on their behalf. I could probably surmise.
Maybe we can have a conversation offline?
Yeah, we could.
Okay, thank you.
That looks like all the questions. Thank you, Captain, for that, all the information. I think it's good information for our community to have, and so, we appreciate you coming in and bringing all that information and answering our questions. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, we'll look into the texting capabilities and options, but I do want to remind everybody that Pulse Point is an app that you can use for fire safety. So all calls that come into 911 are then posted on Pulse Point, and you can say whether you want to, you want to understand whether it's a medical emergency in Vista, or a structure fire, or an open fire, and that actually comes to the app before it actually gets dispatched. So you can stay informed that way.
You can also listen to the calls. You can listen to the...
Yeah, listen to the, yeah, you can. Yeah, and I hope we do look at the texting. I know that our church does, you opt in with the number, and then they send stuff out every day, that, you know, so they, there's a program that they can do that. So, with that, we will move on to our consent calendar. The following recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion, unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the clerk's secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar. We have 12 consent items this evening. Do I have any, nothing from the public? Nothing from the public, the general public, so, Councilmember Contreras. I would like to pull C5. Okay, and Councilmember Rigby?
I would like to, I would like to pull C11. But with that, I would make a motion that we approve the balance of the consent calendar as presented.
A second.
Okay, motion and a second, please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. So then we'll go to item C5, the Active Transportation Program Grant Funds, which will, what?
Say we have Community Development Director John Conley, and our Traffic Engineer Sam Hessen in here, that can provide a report.
Would you like to hear, yeah, a report? Yes. Let's hear a report.
The Townsite Complete Street Plan, which we have a brief presentation on, encompasses Townside Drive, West Los Angeles Drive, and North Santa Fe Avenue. And just a quick background on how we got the grant, how the city received the grant fund, and is the city hired a consultant to develop a complete street plan for the Townsite area, the three streets that I mentioned. It's the entire length of, I should say, Townsite in West Los Angeles, and then North Santa Fe, between California Avenue and Bovier Drive. Part of the study that the consultant did included two community workshops that we held, where issues were heard from the residents identified, and then the city and the consultant went back to the community, presented the solutions to those issues. So following that, the city applied for an Active Transportation Program Grant, and the project was awarded $3.968 million in grant funding. So the proposed improvements kind of highlight of what it includes is new sidewalks, bike lanes, roundabouts, curb popouts, pedestrian signals, bike lanes, and enhanced crosswalks. So this is probably a little hard to see, but this is West Los Angeles Drive, it shows the improvements. It shows the improvements. Shows that roundabouts, curb popouts, the white, so it's like the strip in, the sidewalks. And then this is Townside Drive, similar types of improvements. North Santa Fe Avenue to the left is Bobbiere Drive and enhanced crosswalks. And there's one mid-block pedestrian signal that is shown there kind of to the right of the screen. That's the other half of North Santa Fe Avenue, similar improvements as well as another mid-block pedestrian signal. These are sort of like close-ups of some of the areas. This is not all of them, but this is a sample of a roundabout, for example, at, this is West Los Angeles and East Drive. Another roundabout at West Los Angeles and Avenue de David de Juarez. This is North Santa Fe Avenue and West Los Angeles Townside Drive, shows a curb popout on the northwest corner, as well as adding a crosswalk that does not currently exist on the north leg. This is Townsite and Indian Rock and the existing always-stop intersection that is offset sort of confusing for drivers where the proposal for this intersection is to do curb popouts to clarify that right-of-way assignment. This is North Santa Fe Avenue and Bobbiere. This is all existing, the only change would be at an intersection like this is to do what is known as enhanced visibility crosswalks to add the ladder pattern so that they're more visible to drivers. This is one of the mid-block pedestrian signals that is proposed on North Santa Fe Avenue. So this would be an exclusive signal for pedestrians. That was the last one. That concludes the presentation.
Okay, councilmember Contreras.
Yeah, and can you just remind me how many applications went in for this grant?
So the Active Transportation Program has two components, the statewide, which is what we applied for, and that the state received 550 applications.
And they selected how many?
About 45 or 50, somewhere around there.
And if I remember correctly, one of the big reasons why we were selected was because of the participation we received from the community.
That's a big part of it, definitely. So this is, this really is a very strenuous grant program. There's many, many components that are considered, but one of the basic things is that they would like to see that a local agency went out, got the community engaged, identified the problems kind of from the perspective of the community and developed solutions kind of in partnership with the community.
It was a fantastic workshop. I was able to, you know, be at both of them and, you know, just want to remind the community that when we get together, these are the types of projects that we can bring forward. So it's really important for us to get to know one another and for grievances to be brought forth to the city because this, you know, it was a long process and it worked out really well. I have one more thing. I know that I had requested in the past if it was possible to do one last community forum regarding this project. I know that we can't really, you know, change too many things, but this is anticipated to be finished in 2022, one around there?
Correct, construction December 2022. The design, I believe about June 2021. So the design process in itself is almost two years.
Okay.
It's a pretty long process just to get the final plans put together.
So I think it would be fantastic if we could have one more, you know, community forum, either, I mean, I would like it at the beginning of the design process, but at any point, it's such a long time from now to then, just to have the community have the ability to have one more look at this. That would be my request. Other than that, it's fantastic. Thank you so much for the presentation. I make a motion to move forward with C5.
Councilmember Green.
I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for $3,968,000. I'm not sure what your salary is, Sam, but I am sure it's not $3,968,000, brother. So thank you for bringing that grant. In the little print, we did put $209,000 of city money towards it, but what a small price to pay for such a huge impact that it's going to have on our community. And it couldn't have happened without you and the work that you did with our community members and everything you did. So just thank you so much, man. You are greatly appreciated and I appreciate everything you're doing for our community and all of our community members really appreciate it as well.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Yes, we really appreciate it and we celebrate the grant.
Yes, we do. And I will go ahead and second the motion to approve C5.
Okay, and I don't see any other speakers for that, so I will ask to place your vote, cast your vote. That motion passes unanimously. That makes us, takes us to item C11, which is Amendment to the City Council Policy 3014, Small Wireless Facilities. Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't particularly think we need a report on this one. My only question is regarding the changes in some of the regulations for the small cell wireless. We had reduced the public notice distance from 250 to 100 feet. And I understand that there really isn't anything anybody can do about this. This is coming at us from a higher level. But I think the notification should be kept at 250 feet instead of 100. 100 feet is a very, very small radius, not even across my cul-de-sac, for instance. So, and I understand that the city is going to be sending notices out to the people within the 100 feet and the notice will say, "This is happening. This is, cell site's going to go up in this location." And something to the effect that this isn't anything the city is doing, this is mandated by whatever the regulation is. If you have questions, please contact and then sending them to whatever that jurisdiction is. I would just like to see that same notice go out a little farther to 250 feet because I think people are interested in these cells. We've seen people come and talk. There's not a lot of information, as it was pointed out, about these cell sites, but people are interested in them anyways. And I think it's always good as the city to put out as much information as we can to our community. And that's something that our community's been asking us for, please share information with us. So even though we can't stop this and they really don't have anything they can do about it, I just think it's important that we notify as many people as possible. So I would not be in favor of reducing the notification to 100 feet. I'd like to keep it at 250. So I would ask my colleagues to please chime in on that unless you, unless that's just doable or do we need a motion?
We would need a motion.
Councilmember?
So then I would move that we accept this item as it's presented with the exception of keeping the public notice at 250 feet.
Councilmember Contreras.
I agree with you, councilmember Rigby. I think that we should, you know, I see the perspective of, you know, these are going to go in a lot of places because they're going to go on existing light poles and so we might be sending a ton of notices, but I'm okay with that. One of the, one of the things that I do have a question on this to add on to some of the concerns, on page, it would be 75 of 112. It's section 5.7 in Luffy for landscape restoration and maintenance. So one of the issues that I have with the in-Lufy's is that when, there's certain parts of the city where trees are extremely valuable and there's not too many trees or landscaping. So my concern is that, you know, we're going to have these companies come in, install, you know, their 5G system, you know, ruin some of the landscaping and just say, "Oh, we're going to pay this in-Luffy," when that in-Luffy could go anywhere in the city and it doesn't necessarily have to stay to improve what was destroyed there. So I have an issue with that. Hopefully, I'm understanding it correctly. If I'm not, then I would like to hear some more information from staff regarding that.
So in situations where the landscaping is removed for one of these installations, the city has the option of requiring an in-Luffy or requiring the landscaping be replaced in kind. We would normally require that it be replaced in kind unless we had some future improvement project that we knew was forthcoming where we didn't want it reinstalled because there was going to be future improvements affecting that area. In that case, we would allow for an in-Luffy.
So is there a specific way to ensure that that in-Luffy stays within that geographic area for the improvements there?
So the in-Luffy would go right back into the exact area that we would take the money for, correct?
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And did you want to second that?
The motion on the floor?
Yes.
Yes, I would.
Okay, I see no other speakers. Oh, deputy mayor?
Do the cell phone companies pay for the cost of the notifications, including our staff time?
The way the ordinance is currently set up, it is the city's cost to provide the notice. So if you'd like to amend your motion to include a requirement that the cell companies pick up that fee, we can certainly make that adjustment.
I would so amend my motion.
And the second also?
Postage supplies and reasonable staff time.
Yes.
I second the amendment. And councilmember Green?
That was my question as well, and I just wanted to make sure that we're all talking about the same thing. We're not actually talking about building new towers, we're talking about adding on to our light poles, right? And so just like the little boxes on every single light basically throughout the city, correct?
And some, they could have their own pole too, I think.
So they can also construct their own poles with this type of thing. Okay, yeah, like I said, the cost is my big thing. So with that amendment, I'm okay with it. Give me the vote.
Okay, I have no other speakers, so I would say cast your votes, please. That motion passes unanimously. With that, we will move on to our public hearings and we have one public hearing this evening. This is a public hearing to receive testimony regarding a proposed zone change and vesting tentative parcel map at 1160 Branding Iron Drive. So the public hearing is now open. Community Development and Engineering Director John Conley will introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris Winters of my staff will be providing the presentation.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. This public hearing is for consideration of a proposed zone change and vesting tentative parcel map for the property located at 1160 Branding Iron Drive. The applicant is Branding Iron LLC. The subject property is slightly over three acres in size, located on the south side of Branding Iron Drive, approximately 700 feet east of South Melrose Drive. The site is currently developed with one single-family home, a detached garage, and several small accessory structures. The property is designated Low Density Residential under the city's general plan and the existing zoning is A1 Agricultural. The applicant requests approval of a zone change from the agricultural zone, which requires minimum one-acre lots, to the E1 Estate Zone, which allows one-half acre lots. The application includes a vesting tentative parcel map to allow four-lot subdivision. The city council reviewed this proposal as a discussion item in April of last year and directed staff to accept the formal application since the proposal for half-acre lots is consisting with existing development in the surrounding neighborhood. Last month, on April 16th, the Planning Commission reviewed the project and adopted Resolutions 201905 and 06 recommending city council approval of the proposed zone change and the vesting tentative parcel map. This exhibit shows the existing general plan land use designation for the property of Low Density Residential, LD, which allows for residential land uses with a maximum density of two dwelling units per acre. All surrounding properties within approximately 1,000 feet of the subject property have the same general plan designation. As shown on the next slide, although the existing zoning for the property is A1, the majority of the surrounding properties are zoned E1 Estates Residential, which are shown in green on the exhibit. The next slide shows the proposed zone change from A1 to E1 Estate Zone, which would allow for the development of single-family residences on minimum half-acre lots. Since the proposed zoning would be consistent with the existing low-density general plan designation for the property, no amendment to the general plan is being requested. The proposed subdivision would create four one-half acre residential lots within, with the existing residents to remain on parcel A, which is located at the upper left in the slide. Improvements would include a right-of-way dedication to complete the 42-foot half-width right-of-way along Branding Iron Drive, pad grading with stormwater detention, utility connections, and a private shared driveway. Under Sequel Guidelines, Section 15183, the proposed project qualifies for exemption from additional environmental review because it is consistent with the development density and use characteristics established by the City of Vista General Plan 2030 update adopted in 2012. Staff's recommendation is for the city council to introduce and adopt an ordinance approving a zone change from A1 Agricultural Zone to E1 Estate Zone for Assessor's Parcel Number 1690801 and to adopt city council resolution approving a vesting tentative parcel map to subdivide one 3.028-acre parcel into four parcels located at 1160 Branding Iron Drive. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available to answer any questions.
And we have no speakers for the public, so councilmember Green.
Thank you, Mr. Winters, for presentation. Greatly appreciated. When I was going through the information on this, obviously, I don't think that it's a bad project by any means, but I was a little stumped on page 11 of 41, under the Exhibit A, when we're talking about CCNRs. It actually looks like the city is requiring a homeowners association to be formed for the construction of these four properties. And it was kind of explained to me on the why of it, but I, it doesn't look like there's a real private street. It looks like there's flag lots with easements and they're going to be using a public street for access. I don't understand why we would institute a forced homeowners association. I don't think that that area is customary. I don't know that there are homeowners fees off Branding Iron over there. I think there might be CCNRs, which kind of try to maintain the integrity, but no actual governing association or monthly fees. And I'm wondering if we're requiring that and if it's customary to require that on such a small, like little development. Go.
It is currently customary to do so as a result of the stormwater requirements that are driven by the state. So if you notice on this plan, there's a stormwater detention basin up in the upper right-hand corner on one of the lots, but it serves all four of the lots, so they're collectively required to maintain that.
So that's the community area area?
Correct.
Wow. Okay, and I mean, do we, I guess it doesn't matter, the developer will come in and say what the fee's going to be and everything, but anytime a development is done like this now, we're requiring a homeowners?
If the stormwater detention is collective and not individual on each individual lot, it requires an association and CCNRs, correct?
Wow. Sounds fun. Thank you. That was great information.
So is that, that's my, you're my only, councilmember Rigby?
I was just going to say.
Are you trying to push a button?
I was going to move that we approve.
Oh, okay.
This item.
Do you have a second? Or I can second, I'll second.
I'll second, yeah.
Okay, please cast your votes. And we close the public hearing?
And I request we close the public hearing. Move to close the public hearing.
That motion passes unanimously. The next thing are our discussion items. We have two discussion items this evening. The first one is D1, CIP 8282, Bub Williamson Park Upgrades Project, Park Design. And our assistant city manager, Ally Zimmerman, is going to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. With me tonight is Tony Winnie, Assistant to the City Manager and Project Manager for the Bub Williamson Park Upgrades. He will be providing the agenda report.
All right, good evening, councilmembers. So I'm going to provide an overview of the Bub Williamson Park Project to show you where we are. Currently, we, the park project designs are in 60%. So I'm going to be sharing those with you tonight, providing a short overview of the park project and discussing the budget for the park as well. So for those in the audience who are new to the project, it's located at 530 Grapevine Lane and it was built in 1986. The current hours are seven to dusk and we have two softball fields, a passive-use area, seating, restrooms, and a snack bar. There are a few amenities at the park and this park was targeted as a CIP project to not only increase the amenities available to the public, but also provide additional ADA disabled access to the park as well. Here's a site map of the park. Grapevine Lane is on the right-hand side of the Grapevine Lane is on the right-hand side of the screen, and there's also a secondary access to the park on the bottom of the screen from Huff Street. So background on the park. So one of the City Council's goals for 1820 is to continue to improve existing parks as well as acquire new park land when available. So Bub Williamson currently has $1.7 million allocated in the CIP budget for the design and construction of the park. Quick background on the timeline for the park to date. On February 14th, 2017, the City Council approved the original design for the park, and then in September of 2017, the City Council approved the removal of the outdoor soccer After that, we engaged the public in a series of workshops, which were held in November of 2017, to gather additional input on the amenities that the public would like to see at the park, and workshop participants voted on the desired elements at that time, and then we presented the public with an initial conceptual design, which was used as the template for discussions in those workshops. At the December 2017 City Council meeting, the City Council went through the amenities that the public had presented, and then prioritized those amenities, and also decided to remove the dog park, which was part of the park project at that time. After that, we heard, held a third workshop with the public on February of 2018, where we presented two different conceptual plan options, and then settled upon a hybrid of those two conceptual plans, which is the conceptual plan we used to develop the plans which you're going to view tonight. So I mentioned the prioritization which took place. This is the project scope that the City Council approved at that time. I'm not going to read through each one, but all of these elements are included in the designs you're going to see tonight. In addition to the amenities that you just saw, City Council also approved some details on the project scope, which include operating hours, the pedestrian gate that we will be adding to Huff Street. However, we will be, there's a vehicular gate there that will remain closed. There's also a sidewalk connection which is needed on Grapevine. So the sidewalk stops on one side of Grapevine Lane. We are going to continue that connection into the park, which was requested by the public. And then one of the other things we've been doing is trying to research different grant opportunities that are available, not only for this park, but for Palo Vista Park as well. And then finally, it was requested that we reach out to VUSD, but regarding an educational area, which had been requested for a portion of the park project, which essentially would talk about some of the native flora and fauna that is located in the riparian area, which is adjacent to the park. So we did approach VUSD about a prospect of them heading up or spearheading development of that area, which is now located where the dog park used to be programmed. However, VUSD has told us that they're not interested in supporting that at this time. However, we are going to be looking at some other opportunities to provide some signage that talks about the flora and the fauna in that area and incorporate that into the park project design. So we presented the 60% plans, which you're going to see tonight, to the Parks and Recreation Commission on March 25th, and we've also posted the 60% design plans on the city's website in the month of March, and allowed for public comment on those plans through the month of April. We also notified all the public stakeholders that have been working with us to date, not only of those meetings, but tonight's meeting as well. So I'm going to provide an overview of the planned design at this point in time. I'm going to start with the area to the left side of the screen, which was the area previously allocated for the dog park. One of the things that the public had requested was that that area be programmed as more of a passive use, and so what you see here is DG pathways leading through what will be a landscape-planted area with mature trees and with some benches for seating, and then in addition to that, we'll be looking at adding that signage I just referenced on the plants and the animals that live nearby. Then I'm going to go to the top of the plan there, where you see that big square. That is the playground area, which I'll be talking about in just a minute. We have a close-up shot of that area of the park project. But next, right in back of that square is the existing restroom building. So we will be upgrading the restrooms and retrofitting them, and so that they allow for disabled access. To the right of that, you see the entrance from Grapevine, and then we will be planting the entire park or replanting it with drought-tolerant native landscaping. We will also be refurbishing the existing parking lot and restriping it, including disabled access there, and changing the grade as it meets the park itself to allow for expanded access as well. As you go down the right-hand side of the plan, you hit Huff Street and the vehicular and the pedestrian gate, which I had mentioned earlier in the plan. So as I mentioned, we will be adding a new pedestrian access point there on Huff Street. All of the sidewalks throughout the park project will meet ADA requirements. And so as you go into the park from the pedestrian gate, you'll see there on the right-hand side is what's being called the passive recreation area. So it will have a number of mature trees in the center area, and then it will be ringed with a couple of picnic tables, as well as bench seating areas. As you come up out of that area, right through the center of the plan, you'll see there's a sidewalk connection that goes through the center of the park, and that is one of the new outdoor pavilion areas. So we have one in the center, which has three picnic tables, and then there's one up to the left of that one, which is smaller, that also has picnic area seating as well. Right to the right of the smaller pavilion, you see a green space area and a small square. That small square is reserved for public art, so we do plan on incorporating one of Vista's kite designs into the park as well. As you move to the left of the two pavilions, you'll see this is what's termed the active recreation area. So we did want to allocate space for people to have picnics and to play, you know, pick-up game, throw the ball around, and so that area will be lighted after dark, and as will the rest of the park project. So I'll go over the lighting with you in just a moment. That space also has additional seating area, so we have two picnic tables available for the public, and there's additional seating space adjacent to the playground. So these are some of the amenities that I just went over on the plans. This is a picture of the redesigned restroom area. So right now, you have a very simple building, which is made of CMU brick, so we'll be upgrading that, and currently, there are some privacy screens that we'll be also remodeling. One of the requests that we have had from the public is to add some fencing and some gates on either side of the restroom to prevent access to the space between the existing restroom and the adjacent fencing. So that access will no longer be available to folks. This is a close-up of the center portion of the plan, and I'm going to, if you look to the bottom of the plan, you see two dashed space areas. Both of those are detention basins, so we will be providing two detention basin areas to handle stormwater for this project. This is an example of the gate fencing. So one of the things that the public had requested was an upgrade of the fencing material that is not only on Huff Street, but also on Grapevine. So on Grapevine, we currently just have a swing arm which goes down at park closing, so we'll be replacing that with six-foot-high fencing similar to this, and then also the vehicular and the pedestrian gate on Huff will also be replaced with this type of fencing. This is a picture of the outdoor pavilion area that I had shown you earlier. So there'll be two of those with the picnic tables underneath. And these are some of the site furnishings that we've chosen for the project. So not only the picnic tables, but the trashcans and the bench seating as well. So lighting, the park, as I mentioned, will be open until 8:00 PM, and we have six perimeter lights that will be located on the northern field, which is the active recreation area that I had shown you earlier. In addition to that, we'll have 30 pedestrian lights adjacent to the sidewalks throughout the park project. The light that you see here on the left is an example of what one of those pedestrian lights look like. Then in addition to that, the two pavilions will be separately lit, and then we'll have lights on the playground areas as well, in the shade structures that are located above the playground structures, and we'll have motion-activated parking lights in the parking So the children's play area, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about that. So we have two play structures there that will serve two different age groups of children. We'll have swing sets with ADA-accessible swings, a sensory play area, a hillside roller slide, boulder climbing, resilient surfacing, shade structures, and exercise equipment. So this is a close-up shot of the playground area with the swings on the bottom portion, and then to the left and the right of the swings are two of the different exercise equipment areas. As you move to the top of the plan, you see those are the three separate shade sails that will go over the play equipment. And then if you're familiar with the existing site, there's a concrete amphitheater that wraps around what is now one of the softball fields. So we're going to retain some of that seating so that the parents can sit adjacent to the playground area and watch their children as they play, but we'll be adding additional access from the upper level to the playground area. So you see two sets of stairs on each side of the amphitheater seating area. This is a picture of the play equipment proposed for the site, so as I said, serving two different age groups. We will also be incorporating the two log seating benches that you see there in this picture as well. One other request from the public that we've had is that the play equipment be neutral tones and mix into the surrounding riparian area, and so that's why we've chosen something with some neutral colors. This is a different shot of the playground, so this shows the swings, including the two ADA-accessible swings on the right-hand side, and then this also shows the sensory play area for children with learning disabilities, and so I'll show you some of the play equipment that we are proposing for that. So the play equipment basically provides a different sensory experience for these children. It centers more around sound and touch and feel, and so not only have we tried to incorporate those elements here in the play equipment itself, but also in some of the landscaping that's proposed for the site as well. And this is a picture of the roller slide, which will go in the amphitheater area. So we'll only have one, we won't have two, but it's essentially, if you can imagine, the conveyor belt-type things where, you know, you actually see packages roll off of them, that is the same type of slide that you will have here in the park. So I think the kids will enjoy that quite a bit. These are some pictures of the fitness equipment that's proposed. There's six different stations that are located at different points along the park, adjacent to the sidewalk, so that you can run or walk around the circular trail, and then also access the fitness equipment as well. These are some pictures of some shade structures that will go over the playground area. And then I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the project budget. So currently, the city has $6.7 million in available park development fees that could be used for not only this project, but the Palo Vista Park project as well. It's estimated that the Bub Williamson Park project will require an additional $1.9 million. In addition to that, the Palo Vista Park project may need up to $2.6 million, pending on the outcome of a $1.2 million grant application that the city will submit to the state in August. Use of the park development fees to close the full funding gap for both park projects would leave an available fund balance of approximately $2.2 million in our park development fee fund. So if approved, the staff will include any final construction costs, as well as the recommendation for use of the park development fees to fund those projects when we come back before City Council for each project. So next steps, as I mentioned, the plans are currently posted on the city's website for review. If approved tonight, the plans will proceed to 100% design by the summer of 2019, and then we'll present a revised budget and plans to the City Council in August of this year, with construction bid opening in the fall, and then the bid would return to the City Council for approval in this winter, with construction beginning next year. So that concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions, as well as Stephanie Hatton, our consultant in landscape architecture with ASR.
Thank you. Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. This has been a long process for us to get to this point with this park, and I have to say, this is one of the most beautifully designed parks that I've seen anywhere, and I say thank you for listening to the community, attending the meetings, having the meetings, and really going back to what the community was asking for in this park. I particularly love the innovative way that we're keeping the existing stadium seating, but you're putting the roller slide in the middle of it, and that's using that, but breaking it up and giving a different, a different, a different device for a playground. So I think that's a great touch, and I thank you for that. When you talked about the school not wanting to participate right now with the educational area down by the riparian area, I was kind of sad to hear that news, but I, my understanding is that we have two community groups that might want to step up to the plate and take that on as, you know, part of their mission to put out community service. So I'm confident that at some point, that will be done, and it will be done within the community. So as disappointing as it is that VUSD has stepped away from it, I have no doubt that it can be done with community groups' help, and maybe not just choosing one of them, but allowing both of them to do what they do best, and making, working together can make it really something nice for our kids in the community, not just for the school kids, but for the neighborhood kids and the neighborhood families. So I think that's, that's okay, we can do that. And some of the other things, like the sensory garden and the sensory area, I understand that there are grants that we can go for, we can try to get for that as well, which would be in addition to the grant funding that we're already seeking. So I know that there are opportunities that we're going to be looking at to try to bring down the cost, final cost of the city even more, so I'm hopeful on those parts. Again, and I appreciate the redesign of the bathrooms, because that was a big concern with some of the things that have gone on over there, the fence as well, I thank you for that. I want to say thank you to the community who has been involved in this monthly, weekly, for the better part of a year here, doing this, year and a half now. So with that, I want to say thank you to you, and I would move that we approve these designs as presented tonight and move forward with this.
I just have a speaker card, so before Councilmember Contreras speaks, do you want to hear the speaker? Is that okay? Okay, so Scott Kinghorn? You have three minutes, sir.
Good evening. Thank you. We had sent, neighbors of the area had sent an email in to the council members and Tony Winnie, and didn't get a response on it. We had some additional concerns. Overall, we love the project. It looks like a very well-designed project, looks like what we want and what we need, and we're very happy with it. Being a well-maintained and safe, secure neighborhood park is what will activate Bub Williamson. Some of the things we'd like to recommend, real quick, and didn't get a response, I don't understand the 60/40. I don't know if what we want is going to be in the 40. What's the 60? So we're a little confused on that right now. We need a fence along the west walking path, discouraging homeless and vandals from entering the park, keeping people involved from entering the riparian area. the park, keeping people involved from entering the riparian area, protecting people from falling down, a very steep slope area, and I did submit pictures of those to staff on the email. A brick wall continued along the residential area on the southern part of the park, near the residence. This would be a privacy, noise, and physical security barrier. The current chain-link fence allows people to peer into homes and allows dogfights with homeowners' dogs through the fence. Homeowners observe people urinating through the fence onto their property. This was discussed with the P&amp;R Department last meeting, and they all agreed this is needed. Speed bumps. Residents have called the sheriffs numerous times to report speeding vehicles doing donuts in the park and nearby streets. We suggest at least one speed bump after the last driveway before entering the park, and within the park maybe two, three. Alternates to trees, liquid ambers and sycamore trees have very large spiky seed pods. They're very messy, and they're dangerous, you know, when you step on them, you either slip, slide, or you get, you know, pinched by these things or stuck. The amount of maintenance would be required, be very extensive, because these trees drop a lot of foliage, as well as these pods. So there's other options that we submitted in the email. It would be very beautiful trees, colorful, and work well. Lighting, second streetlight at the park entrance on Grapevine Lane, next to the project new sidewalk, the new sidewalk side, we need another streetlight, city streetlight. This is an area of concern due to crime, drugs, activity, and it's this bad area, so lighting would maybe help this. Then we were asking for some signage stating that Bubba Williamson is a neighborhood park, and that we want to keep it a neighborhood park, and we, as a neighborhood, have been very proactive about calling and dealing with the park issues. There's been off-leash dogs, loud music, trash, vandalism, et cetera.
Your three minutes is up. Thank you. Councilmember Contreras.
I agree that this is the most beautiful design for a park I have ever seen. The price tag definitely comes along with that beautiful design, so I think at some point, we really have to say, this is what we can do with the funds that we have. You know, there's some issues that are, issues with the park, but not necessarily in the park. So we have really increased our budget on this park, and I think the neighborhood, you know, really deserves something beautiful there. But one of the things that I want to talk about too, is that because there's such a significant investment going into this park, that we don't think about this park as belonging to one or two cul-de-sacs, but it really belongs to the neighborhood. And I want us to be really cognizant about what that means and the scope of what a neighborhood is. So I think that this is going to bring a lot of activation to the park. There's a lot of different, the design allows for different abilities, people with different abilities to really enjoy this park, and I think that's something that's unique to this plan for Bubba Williamson Park, because, you know, we do have people of so many different abilities here in the city, and they don't necessarily have a place to go. And this park is going to provide recreation for families that have, you know, some individuals that have different types of abilities. So I think it's really important that, moving forward, when we're looking at parks, that we really keep in mind the diversity that we have here in our city. But I think, you know, I can't harp on it enough, that this is a really big investment that we're making into this community, and I think it's about time. And, you know, when we look at the cost breakdown, the original park design was $281,000. You know, we could have saved that money if we would have just opened this up to the public at the very beginning. And so I think that the lesson in Bubba Williamson Park is that we take the community input at the beginning, and we end up designing a park that is really, really beautiful. I do want to say that, you know, I see the Bubba Williamson Park people out there, thank you so much for welcoming me into your neighborhood and allowing me to be a discussion. You know, I fell in love with this park, I had no idea what it was, and then I saw it on social media, I went, I fell in love with the park, and this design is incredible. And I remember one of the discussions where we were looking at that amphitheater, and, you know, ASR was like, it's going to cost all this money to tear the amphitheater out. And so, you know, that is a really innovative approach. I actually suggested it, because, you know, I think it's really important that we try to cut costs wherever we can, but really kind of go with the flow in areas that it makes sense. So being able to slide down, having some rock climbing, I mean, that is fabulous. This design is just amazing, and I can't wait till it comes to fruition, because I'm going to be all over this place walking. One thing that I would like to see as far as the plants, I think it'd be really cool to have sea anothis there, the California lilac, since, you know, it's such a big part of Vista, but when it blooms, it's just incredible. So and the wildlife that it attracts, the native wildlife is really important. So I do hear some of the concerns about some of these plants. I'm not a big fan of the liquid amber, amber, specifically because I have actually sprained my ankle walking, and the seed pods are huge, so you can't always see them, especially if there's not enough lighting and it's night, at night, and that's exactly what happened to me downtown Vista one time. So I don't, I'm not a big fan of those trees, just being honest with that. But outside of what I have, what I've already said, I mean, I just think it's absolutely fabulous, and I would love to move forward with it. I just want, I think that we really need to retain costs at this point, because it's just kind of taking a lot more money than we originally thought. So I think the design at this point is fabulous, the concessions made, where we really took community input, we've gotten to a really good place. So this is definitely a model, moving forward, how we should interact with the community. And it looks like the Palo Vista Park is going that way too, so thank you very much, I appreciate it. And you made a motion? Okay, I second that motion.
Deputy Mayor Franklin.
So are we pursuing some grants to assist us with the cost of this project? And roughly, without getting into the specifics of all the different grants, how much money out of the 3.672 million would that represent?
So we're only pursuing parks, grants for Palo Vista Park at this point, since any grants we secure for that park will help offset the reliance on the park development fee fund, thereby freeing up money to help fund this project as well. One of the reasons is because Palo Vista Park is a much more competitive location to secure grants due to the demographics of the surrounding community.
So...
And I would also add, because it's a new park space, and there are fewer opportunities for funds for an existing park.
I just wanted to understand, basically, you know, what part of the, what role it might play in reducing costs here, and it sounds like it's an insignificant factor. We approved a $1.7 million budget, and now we're looking at a $3.7 million budget, so we've got a $2 million overrun on the design here. We're projecting a $6.7 million balance in the park fund?
Correct.
I think we've taken in about $2 million in the park fund in the last, what, three years? Is that roughly accurate?
No, we've taken in probably closer to $4 to $5 million in the last three years.
What kind of revenue estimates do we have for the park development fund at this time?
So we, $6.9 million, or, excuse me, $6.7 million is going through June of 2019. We estimate that with the development that we have in Vista, we'll likely generate somewhere between $1.3, $1.8 million for the following fiscal year.
Okay. I'm really struggling, and one of the things I wanted to see here, and I hadn't had a chance to request it yet, but I don't see a more detailed budget plan for the park, so that we could have the ability to choose some items that might, so we could identify what the greatest cost drivers are here, and talk about whether or not those are essential to everyone's happiness. I really appreciate the process we've gone through. It doesn't look like there were many ideas that were brought to us that didn't make it into the final plan. At some point, we disregarded the fact that there was a budget constraint in what all the priorities were, because, you know, if everything's a priority, then nothing's a We've made a goal as a council to acquire more parkland, and this fund is how we acquire more parkland. So this additional $2 million that makes this park go from great to amazing is a whole nother park somewhere, that we're, it's at least the land for another park that we're not going to acquire. I'm really troubled by that. I really have a concern about that.
I understand where you're coming from, and I appreciate that, but I do want to clarify that that original budget was based on the original park proposal for an outdoor soccer arena, and those estimated costs were based on that. Once the City Council provided staff direction to go on a completely different path with this project, the construction estimate was not, no longer had any tie-in or nexus to the amount that we had estimated at the time this was approved three-plus years ago.
So we took that budget and set it aside, scrapped that?
We said, correct, and we'll see what new project that the City Council and the community have asked for will cost, and we'll come back and ask for park development fees or grants to cover that.
And if I jump in right here, if you might remember that when we talked about having a soccer arena there in the beginning, we estimated that we'd need an additional million to million-two, and we talked about there were grant funds that might be available for that. So we were aware at that time that to do the soccer arena and the upgrade, the 1.7 wouldn't be sufficient.
Right, the question was asked about the 60%, 40%, I'm going to try and answer that, just to verify that I know what it means, and to complain about something that I'm very unhappy about. The 60% means that we've picked the color on the playground equipment, but we may not have, I don't know, picked the exact pieces. I think that number pertains to the percent of completion of the minutia of the plan. Is that basically accurate?
That's basically accurate, but, you know, the set of plans is much more than a one-sheet concept design that we typically look at. It has hydrology reports, grading, construction, all the pavement, it's, you know, a 40-page large document full of technical details, and the further, you can't get further along in the process without finalizing that this is what it needs to look like above ground, and then you can do those finals.
You know, I'm a layperson, and I don't understand all the exigencies of coming up with a conceptual drawing, but what the community and the council has to review is a conceptual drawing and a list of amenities, and I truly fail to understand how that costs $480,000, even if it's been done two times completely.
It's the 60% of all of those plans I was talking about total that, to get to 100% design of the full construction documents, it's not just the conceptual plan that you see in that dollar amount, it's the full construction documents.
That gets us all the way, all the way there?
Correct.
Okay.
Twice.
Twice, right. Yeah, I mean, we really made a mistake in going to full completion of plans without basically having the council's final commitment to build the plan that was in front of us. I'm frustrated that $480,000 is the budget for planning this, but I have requested to see detailed invoices and try and better understand how those costs are comprised. I would like to know more about what our projected park development plan is. We've pointedly asked staff to research new land for acquisition, even if we didn't have the budget to develop those parks, with the understanding that land is becoming more valuable and more scarce, and that if we don't, in this generation, take the effort to acquire land and set it aside for future development, A, those lands won't be there, and B, they'll be much more expensive if they are there. So I am very concerned that this budget that we're being asked to approve here impinges too greatly on our greater goal to acquire and create new parks, which should be amenities for everybody. This being a neighborhood park, I think we are shoehorning way too much into it, and I think we need to get real with what we can spend in a reasonable budget. I want to do something great for this neighborhood, and I want them to have a lot of pride in this park, and I want it to be a beautiful result, but I am really struggling right now with this budget.
Councilmember Green.
Oh, I skipped you, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'll pick up Matt after that.
Okay, thank you. All right, I echo Councilmember Franklin's frustration. He sounds so much better when he's frustrated, though, because he's got that frustration. But $1.7 million budgeted, even if it was, you know, 2.7, the fact that we're at $3.672 million on a budget is huge. You know, I mean, we fight over $20,000 at this, you know, and to just throw $2 million extra bucks up here is a big deal to me as well. And I'm also wondering, what does that take away from other parts of the community? Does that take some improvement away from parks in other areas? Does it take the ability away to purchase other parks? And I know if we have $1.8 million coming in this fiscal year, do we have additional projections of other developments in the pipeline that we're going to say, hey, we're going to replenish this fund to $6 to $8 million over the next five years, and we're going to have more money to do, you know, more items?
I was going to say, I don't think development will continue at the clip that it's on. I mean, it's projected to stabilize, if not drop. So at some point in time, we will not be collecting on an annual basis $1.3 or $1.8 million in park development fees.
Okay, so it looks like that's going to go, and, you know, grants, huge. Sounds like we may have missed the boat on grants for this project, we're only pursuing grants for the other project. Is it possible to still pursue grants for this, or?
We are absolutely evaluating any potential, but when you're talking about a park that doesn't add a new amenity, the grants exist for arena soccer, as the city manager indicated. Grants exist to create new parks, but for upgrades, what would be considered basically an enhancement of an existing space with no new amenity added?
We couldn't make the special needs section as an amenity?
It's potential, and there is, there are grant funding available, and we'll go after whatever this would fall into.
If we threw a stage in there, would it be another amenity?
But we don't want to give the impression that there's going to be a huge amount.
Okay, my thing is, I want to get as much as possible. And to the Bubba Williamson neighbors, I did get your email, and I did review it about more fencing, brick walls, speed bumps, new trees, new sidewalks. As you see, I'm already $2 million over what I was expecting to spend. I would anticipate more fencing, speed bumps, brick walls, new trees, new sidewalks, that's going to be a lot more money. So for now, I don't recommend adding anything to this project. I do think there was a lot of work that went into it. If we can pull it off as a city, and it's not going to financially be a detriment to other citizens in the community, I'm definitely 100% behind it. But that number that you posted right here of $3.1, $3,138,901, it's a very specific number. I'm assuming you have a very specific breakdown of that $3.138,901 down to the dollar. Love to see it, because I want to know exactly what those costs are that we have budgeted in this project, and I didn't see it in your presentation or in my packet.
So we do have those numbers that we could share with you, they were produced by an outside consultant, and that's based on the current construction market. So it really just depends on what sort of bids we get back when we go out to bid later this year. As you know, the construction market is very hot right now, and lots of people are attempting to build, so it'll depend on what the market conditions are at that time.
And I would expect that staff is pretty conservative with that number. Hopefully, you took all that into account, thinking, hey, maybe this is on the high end, we may be able to get it lower, but let's prep the council for 3.7. I just don't want to have a bid come in for $5.6 million, you know, and you say, hey, construction costs are much higher than we thought. I want to make sure we're forecasting all that, because the $2 million's already a huge hit. If it comes back after bid, where it's another $2 million, you could imagine what side I'm going to be leaning on from an approval standpoint, you know what I mean? So anyway, that's all I got, thank you.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, I had pushed my button so that I could respond to the deputy mayor's questions, but I think the assistant city manager did that already regarding the budget difference here from what it was originally, which was the soccer arena and a completely different project, and kind of had to start over again, so I appreciate your comment on that. And I had... And I had wanted to talk about the grants, because I heard Mr. Winnie say that we weren't pursuing any grants on this project, but I do think that that would be a mistake, because even though it is an existing park, we have added some amenities, and we have added some things to it that I think would be something that we could go after grants for, particularly perhaps the sensory garden or the sensory play area and a couple of other things. So I don't want the people to get the impression that we're just not even going to pursue grants. There are grants that we can pursue, and I don't think that we should immediately dismiss those.
And, yeah, and we are not. I just want to clarify that we're not. When we speak specifically about Bub Williamson versus Palavista, when you look at the matrix for being competitive in a grant process, and you can only submit potentially one application per city, in most cases, Palavista would be a more competitive project, and so that's what we're talking about, that where we would pursue one over the other. Not that we wouldn't go after anything for Bub at all.
Right. And when you're talking about pursuing a grant where perhaps you are only allowed to apply once per city, those are state or federal grant monies, correct?
Typically, yes.
So, and, and those are absolutely on the table for us, to go after them in any fashion that we can that would help bolster our Parks and Recreation Fund. But I also understand that there are some organizations and some other agencies out there that have grant monies that they can provide for parks for different things, that might not be public agencies, but they're private organizations or private agencies. And for me, those are also on the table. Any monies that we can find from anybody who wants to hand out money, I will stand there hat in the hand and ask for it. So none of those ideas are off the table at this point. But I do have to agree that the design costs for this park kind of got a little out of control, and I think part of it was because we didn't start the process at the beginning with the community, as a couple of my colleagues mentioned. And I think that is lessons learned, and I, and I appreciate very much that we are starting Palavista at the beginning of the process with the community involvement and not wasting time and money pursuing plans that really nobody wants to talk about. The other question I had in the same vein was, is it really necessary to have an outside park consultant help design a park when we already know what we want? Can't we do that in-house? I mean, for the basic designs and the footprint and...
I think I would refer to our director of engineering to answer that question.
Well, I was going to say that, you know, I've had this conversation with a few of you, and, yeah, I think Ms. Zimmerman said it too, and Mr. Mayor, a city engineer, can chime in if you'd like. It's easy to put circles and squares and geometric figures on a piece of paper to say these are amenities that we'd like, but as you heard in the very detailed report about the different types of sensory playground equipment and utilization and ADA and stormwater and hydrology and lighting and lighting studies, those are all things that we hire consultants for. Those are not things that typically we do in-house on large-scale projects. If you think about South Santa Fe, if you think about any of the parks that we built in the past, we bring in landscape architects. We bring in people to do that. We have a landscape architect that does all of our plan checking right now. We don't do that in-house. So there's a lot of those duties, those specialties, that are performed outside of the process that go into developing something to get you to 60% plans where we're at now. I don't know if Mr. Mayor wants to, has anything else to add? Okay.
Okay. It was something to think about and talk about. I just, I just thought having an outside agency draw the footprint of the park for us was something we could have done for ourselves, and then perhaps, once we got a little farther into the community meetings and the discussion, at that point, bring somebody in to get into the weeds on those. But I guess that's a conversation we can have offline as well. But I still want to say, I think this is a great park. This is a big investment in our community. It's a big investment in this neighborhood, but in our city as well, and it goes to quality of life, not just for this particular neighborhood, but for everybody in Vista. And I don't live next to Bub Williamson Park. I'm a little bit over, but I'll probably be seeing my colleague walking around the trails there. So this will activate the park, and this will help with some of the other issues that are happening in the park, because there has been no activation. So I think, I think for the money that we're putting in, and I recognize, this is a lot of money, but this is a very good thing for our community, and I think it's good for the entire city of Vista. It's a good investment. Palavista is going to be a really good investment for our city as well, and we still will have money left in the fund for future development for other sites. So I'm, I'm very excited about this project. And again, I want to say thank you for the participation that we've had from everybody on this, and I hear your concerns. I appreciate your concerns, and I appreciate that you are one watchdog over our budget. So thank you.
Deputy Mayor Franklin.
You know, I'm, I'm just wondering and thinking, so we're at 3.672 million. We're at 60% complete on the plans. What if we were to ask you to live within a budget of $3 million for this plan, not including any revenues you get from grants? What would that do to the plans that have already been done? Are there some things that we could make choices about? Could we, could we potentially get this? I mean, I'm looking at the designs, and literally everything that was requested is in here. And that means that in the rest of the city, we're going to forego things. We're going to forego new parks. We're going to forego other amenities elsewhere. I mean, I would feel that we'd accomplish some measurement of, some measure of fiscal constraint here, restraint, if we said, instead of 3.672, we would try and live within $3 million. It's still significantly more than I want to see spent. As the city manager pointed out, we're expecting to see a decline in future park development revenues, impact fees into our fund. So this not only represents a significant amount of the money that we have in hand today, it potentially represents a very significant amount of the money that we will have over the next 10 years to spend on this purpose. And, you know, I mean, this is, this is not a small thing. This is, you know, this is about whether or not we're going to build and develop and improve parks in other parts of the city, or whether we're going to spend, you know, two-thirds of the money that we have for this purpose on just one park that the neighbors themselves identify, and rightfully so, as a neighborhood park, that they, you know, have asked us to identify as a neighborhood park, and it sounds like they don't want a regional-level use of that park. So do we want to put regional-level funds into this park? What would your reaction be if we were to suggest a budget of $3 million?
Deputy Mayor, I'll take that one. And I do want to start off by saying, from a staff perspective, we are concerned about how much money we're spending. We are concerned about cost. When you go through, and we can, you can, you can blame me for the first design, but after that, the residents came before the city council, they asked for a lot of things, and they seemed to get what they wanted each phase of the way. So I would agree with you that this park was designed about what the residents and the stakeholders that showed up got. If we were limited to a different budget than 3.6 million, if it was three, we could certainly do this park, but it means that we will cut out a number of the amenities that we'd work with the public on, and that's a possibility. If that's where the city council wants to go, we can do that.
I never envisioned...
To downsize the cost.
I never envisioned that we would include everything that the community brought to us. That's an impossibility. It is impossible in a political system for us to, you know, actualize the requests of everyone in the body politic. Our job as the council is to choose and to create priorities within, and I, and I feel like we haven't done that here, and I feel like a $3 million budget is a tremendous investment, and I feel like we're not even, we haven't talked about the budget. I think, we, we voted in the past on the 1.7. That honestly was my conception of, we were going to redesign within that budget, and we were going to pick from the priorities the community wanted within that budget, not that we would add everything on top of it, and that we would come back with this enormous amount of money.
There's a conversation that took place with the city council, I think, on the third design changes, that the budget that we had was going to change. The budget that, we didn't know what it was, because it wasn't designed enough to know what we thought the construction costs would be, but we knew that 1.7 million a year and a half ago or so was not going to be enough money for this park.
I don't want to beat a dead horse. I didn't get a direct answer to my question about what would the consequence be if we ask you to live within 3 million, and then also, I'd like to hear from my colleagues about whether or not that's something that, that they would support or not.
I think your direct answer would be that we could eliminate some amenities to the park to fit within that price tag.
Okay. And, and we have input from the community already about what the priorities are. Essentially, we've ranked those, and somewhere on the bottom of the list is probably going to be, and I would say, we would look to the bottom of the list, and then we would also look to the largest drivers of cost. And that's what I really like to have in front of me. And quite frankly, I mean, what I, what I would most prefer to do on this is I'd like to see the budget. I'd like to see the construction budget, the proposal, and try and understand where the greatest cost drivers are, so that the council could have some input, and then we could come back and make a more informed decision. I feel like there's some information that we maybe don't have in front of us right now. It would be my honest preference to wait until we see that information, so the council could understand what the impact would be to the design if we wanted to pare back the budget just a little bit. And I wouldn't suggest having the budget, you know, I'm not suggesting going back to the 1.7, but $3 million would be a tremendous increase in the original budget, and it would be a tremendous investment in this park. So I'll suspend and want to hear from my colleagues.
I don't know, but we didn't include everything. This guy just gave us a list of some things we didn't include. I don't necessarily want to go back. We've been through several meetings with this thing. I don't want to start over. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with this, so I'll just let you know that. I don't have any other speakers, so.
Ready to vote.
Do we have a motion in a second?
We do.
Councilmember Green, did you want to say something?
I get Councilmember Franklin's frustration. I just look at the long-term impacts this can have on our city as a whole and all the other parks, and it's really hard to just bite the bullet. And I knew the budget was going to change, but I never, I personally don't remember anybody saying, hey, the budget's going to be double. Are you ready for it? And maybe Amanda can enlighten me on it. I don't know if I want this park redesigned, you know, I mean, I think starting all over is another thing. It's just, it's really hard for us to make a decision on something when I don't see the breakdown of the 3.138. So I guess when the, this will be, come back as a public hearing item when we do a final approval, correct? Or is this ever going to come back again?
It would be a discussion item if we brought it back. I can provide you with a quick overview of where those costs are. Most of your costs are going into grading. Another item that is going into the cost structure is the playground equipment. Okay? And then, I'm sorry?
Approximately, what's the cost of the playground equipment?
Guess, ballpark, would be about $200,000. And then, of course, there's, we have looked at this from a cost-cutting perspective, if was required for us to do some value, value engineering. So we have some suggestions in terms of what we could do, but that's really the council's purview if you want to go down that road.
Yeah, I personally think I'd, I mean, I, I don't know, you know, $200,000 doesn't, once again, doesn't solve the entire problem. I mean, like I say, how much are we spending on new drought-tolerant landscaping? How much are we spending on exercise equipment? How much is the public art? You know, is it going to cost us 100 grand to set up a kites thing there? I mean, you know, those little things, I think the community would say, hey, this is more important than that, and if that puts more money in for other parks. I, I just kind of like more information. I mean, I love the design. I'd love to approve it if it's not going to be detrimental to the community, you know, to the other areas of the city. It's just, it seems like it's not enough information to make a decision on to say, hey, let's go ahead and approve $3.7 million. I don't know what 3.1 million of these dollars are for, but go ahead. And for me, it makes absolutely no sense to approve something like that, even with you telling me a playground costs 200 grand. I'd rather see, I think this presentation should have come with the breakdown of 3.138901. It's a very specific number. There's got to be one document somewhere that should have been in my agenda report.
There is a document, and we're happy to share it with you.
It's a bummer it's not here right now, and we couldn't review it for a week before the meeting, because now we're in a situation where you got two guys saying, hey, this is a big number. I mean, I think giving you 3.138 million and not knowing exactly where every penny's going, you know, but I don't know, and I'm the one giving it to you, it sounds really, it's, it's an awkward request, in my opinion.
Councilmember Green, we're not asking for any funding at this point. You still have two more opportunities, one at the 100% designs, and then one, the second, assuming we brought back an appropriate and reasonable construction contract to determine those costs. But yes, in the interim, we can put some more specifics to this. What we were trying to do is to show you that we heard the, the input from the council and the community. That's what the 60% design entails, and as, as Mr. Winnie mentioned, things like grading, all the, there are a significant amount of that 3.3-plus-million-dollar project are all below-ground things that aren't going to be, they're not fancy and they're not flashy, but they are requirements either by the state or to help us get to an accessibility level, to improve some of those connections, and to keep the, the project safe and, and enhance the safety of it. We can definitely break it down, but again, this is not, this is an approval of the, just the, this is the design that you would like us to move forward with, and if you're not ready for that, we understand, but we're not asking you to commit a dollar amount at this point.
Okay, so we can say we like this design, we just don't like this dollar amount, and we can talk about that at a later date?
I believe so.
Okay.
Well, actually, I'd prefer to have that, I'd prefer to have that discussion before we get to 100% design. I don't want to lead down the road with getting to 100% design, going out for a bid with the costs, and then the council wanting to go in a different direction. I'd rather understand that now. If the council wants to go in a different direction, we can come back to you, we can go back with the cost, we can lay it out for you, and you can give us your feedback.
I'm...
But that would mean, that would, if you're going to do that, then that means you're going to have to come back with the community to let them have input on it again, so you're going to have more community meetings. You're going to have to have more community meetings, I would, I would say.
So we're going to have more design workshops and things if we did that as well?
Well, I think from our perspective is, we've had the design workshops, as, as most of you have said, we've reached out to communities, we've listened to them. So if you want a perspective of keeping the park to a certain budget, then I think the council gives us direction on what you want, and we go forward and build a park for that amount.
See, and I'd like this design pursued with saving as much money as possible, and that's kind of what Ally's saying, is that we're not actually approving an exact dollar amount, and I'm okay with approving the design of this park right now and saying, hey, know that we want you saving as much money as possible, and the design's fine, but maybe when we get the bids and the contractors come back and say, hey, it's going to be $700,000 for that drought-tolerant landscape area, maybe at that point...
We say DG.
Exactly. So that's what I'm saying is...
Modifications, but I don't think...
Minor modifications is what I'm looking at.
I don't think it's going to be, I will say this, I don't think those kind of modifications are going to be to the magnitude of what Councilman Franklin is probably looking for.
It's 600,000 bucks we're trying to save, which is about 20%, or less than 20% of our budget. All right. Well, I, I do approve the park design, and I don't want to go back to community meetings, but I do feel like hopefully you can get some grants and save some money. It's a lot, a lot of money.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you. I just, I just wanted to reiterate that this has come before us before, and we already voted on this design to move ahead with it to get us to this point. So this isn't anything new, and also, we did not approve everything that was on our list. There were a lot of things on the list that, that got no consideration at all. Some things got consideration, discussed, argued about, and then still taken off the list. So I, I don't want people to think that we just caved and gave everything. There was a lot of discussion. There was a lot of back and forth and give and take with council at previous meetings and with the community and with staff on what we're able to do, and we understood that going into it. So I still think this is a good design. I still stand behind it. I'm still going to be pursuing other options to, to fund parts of it. I think there are, there are grant monies out there that we can get for this and that we can get for Palavista. And, you know, you're looking at Palavista also being an additional $2.6 million. So parks are expensive, but I do believe that the return on investment to the community is worth it, and I think it's worth it here as well. So we still have a motion on the floor.
Deputy Mayor Franklin.
Yeah, I, little confusion about the impact of moving forward right now. If we move forward, then staff is going to proceed to 100%. They're going to expend another $60,000 in... They're going to expend another $60,000 in design funds, and we will have a final plan laid before us that we expect to be $3.672 million. And if at that time we make changes, then we will have wasted another $60,000 in design fees. If we were to consider changes, I don't think we need to go back. We brought this plan forward as a consequence of public input. We've conducted extensive public input, we know what the community wants. Our job now as decision-makers is to decide what we can afford and to consider the input of the community as far as what they wanted, and to make those priorities our priorities within our budget. What I'm going to ask is, we've been working on this for how long now?
Since the late 2015.
Okay, so we're four, five years into this? I'm going to ask that we wait another 30 days until we've had a chance to look at the proposed budget. I don't think 30 more days of delay on this after five years of consideration is uncalled for, worth considering spending about, you know, let's call it a third of the total park money that we have to spend over the next 10 years. This is a huge investment. I do want to be very clear, I am not an opponent of any of the designs here. I want to see a beautiful park here. Absolutely have, you know, total desire to see something great here. I just want to make sure that we are being good stewards of the money that we've been entrusted to safeguard, and I think that a delay of, you know, until a future council meeting in the 30-day vicinity to give us some time to understand the cost drivers, I think is warranted. So with that, if it's in order to do so, I would, I would make a substitute amendment that we table this for 30 days and then come back to it at a future council meeting.
Looking for a second on that.
I'd be good with that, I'll second that, 30 days is not that long.
So then we want to look at this motion first, this motion first. I'm thinking.
Just speaking to my motion, I just want to say again, I'm not an opponent of this plan. I just, I am also frustrated that we don't have the detailed costs in front of us, and we haven't been, you know, this is the first discussion of the overall budget number, and it came with a real sticker shock. And, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm going to come back in a month and say, you know, let's pair, let's cut it in half. I just want to understand it, and I want to, I want to know that we've made the right decision here, and I'm just not comfortable without the information that we're yet, you know, fully informed.
Councilmember Contreras.
I completely understand the frustration and, you know, where Deputy Mayor Franklin's coming from, where Councilmember Green is coming from as far as not being able to have a detailed list in front of us of what's costing what, right? So I think that's what's, right now, we can't be like, hey, you know what, that fence, we're going to have to do chain link and not, you know, this beautiful iron fence. Or, you know, maybe we can't really incorporate the exercise equipment. But I think one thing that we should be taking into consideration is that this park has not been updated since inception, which was 1986. The park is older than I am, it hasn't been ADA compliant, and, you know, realistically, what other park space are we pursuing in the city of Vista? You know, so when we're talking about, you know, funding future parks, we definitely need more parks in the city, but it seems like the kind of parks that we're going to be going after are probably going to be smaller parks. So I don't think that, you know, with the funds that are going to be coming in, and I understand that they're going to be leveling off, but we're still going to have enough funds to pursue at least one other park, is what it sounds like to me after this is said and done. I don't know if staff could speak to that a little bit more, but, you know, the $3.6 million, 3.7, yeah, it is a lot of money, but when we look at how long this park has been neglected, and the issues that are occurring in this park, and the quality of life that has, you know, deteriorated, and for those neighbors that are near the nuisance that's occurring in this park, and the fact that I can't think of any park in Vista that really allows any Vistaan with any ability to enjoy it. I just feel like the amenities that are provided, that are in this plan, in this design plan, really are important for the city. So within the scope of how long this park has been in the city of Vista without any upgrades, the limited amount of land that we have in Vista for parks, and the funds that are going that we know are going to be coming in because of development, even if it tapers off, I feel like that's enough for us to be considering another park down the road. So, you know, I want to take those into, those elements into consideration when we're looking at the sticker shock of this, because, yeah, it is a lot of money, but it's not like we're going to be able to go buy another Bringle Terrace Park anytime soon. So I just feel like the footprint of any future parks is going to be really small. That's pretty much all I have to say. I mean, I'm not in favor of tabling this. I think, I think that we have a really good design in front of us, and, you know, I don't know how difficult it would be for us to say, you know what, this exercise equipment bid is way too high, let's just cut that off, or, you know, some of the other enhanced proposals here. I feel like we'll be able to address that in the future. I don't know if I'm wrong about that assumption, or...
If you were to approve the design tonight, we could certainly share the line item budget with the city council after tonight's meeting, and then we can certainly also take a look at those cost-cutting measures, knowing full well that you want to reduce the overall price tag on the project.
I think that sounds fantastic, so. Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you. I wanted to say thank you for your comments, because that's where I was going as well. And we've talked about this park over the years, especially when it first started a couple of years ago with the soccer arena, which really was a push from people outside the community to do that. But we had talked about how the park had been neglected for such a long time, so if you want to talk about the monies that should have been going into this park all these years that didn't, I think we have an account there that we could tap into theoretically. So I appreciate your comment on that, because it's very, very true. I also heard staff say earlier that we have an opportunity to revisit certain elements of it if we need to in the future. You're not asking for us to approve this particular dollar amount right now. And staff said they are not asking for us to approve the dollar amount at this point, they're asking for us to approve the design.
Right.
I think if you plan, if there's a plan on the council by a majority of you, that you want to make major changes to the park, and major means drying it down to, let's say, the $3 million mark, then we should probably have that conversation before we go way too far out, and then there's an expectation that that's going to happen, and we present you something that it doesn't, and there's further frustration.
Didn't you already say that the cost could cha, can change? Because this isn't going to be started, when does construction start?
It certainly can change, we haven't gone out.
It's going to change anyway, so.
This is an estimate, but if there's a, if there's a drive on behalf of the council to make significant reductions to the budget, then I think those conversations are warranted earlier than later.
And wasn't a lot of, isn't a lot of the expense underground expense that it's getting it there? It isn't the top stuff?
That's going to be my next point, was that a lot of it is underground and things that have to be done mandated to us, that no matter what we do, we do any improvements, we have to do these other things. So I'm not in favor of the substitute motion to push this down the road. I would still like a vote on my motion.
But first we have to take, well, Deputy Mayor Westus.
I, I just think that waiting, making a 3.67 million decision, I, we've been working on this decision for five years. It's the first time we've had the big number revealed to us, and we really don't know exactly the grading of which parts, what's the driver in the grading costs. There's a lot of detail that we haven't had the opportunity to get into. But with that, Madam Mayor, if, you know, I, if you're not supportive of my motion, my substitute motion, then I would withdraw it. So I don't know if you want to speak to that. I want to work by consensus here, and this is not, we're not upset with each other, I'm not, you know, this is just about, this is just about making sure that we make the right decision, and, you know, I'm concerned that maybe we're rushing this decision on the very first presentation of this, of this number. And as I've reiterated, unless staff wants to contravene me, we're going to spend another $60,000 planning to spend this number, and those funds may be misused if we don't intend to ultimately approve that number. Mr. City Manager, is that pretty? I'd refer to, pretty accurate? The $60,000 amount?
Yeah, so as the city manager mentioned, now is the time to make a decision if you want to make any significant changes to the park, so that we can save any future design costs.
All right, I think that's pretty clear. If, we are, we are making a binding decision tonight that's going to have at least $60,000 worth of consequence, if not more. If we made major changes, you'd have to go back and design again, and we'd spend another $100,000 in design fees. So if, we are making a final decision tonight. If we change our minds, you're looking at maybe $150,000 in we changed our mind costs, and I certainly don't want to do that. So 30 days is the question before us, but I want to work by consensus here. We don't need to have a vote if there's not a, you know, if there's not support for the tabling.
So are you looking at me?
Yeah, I mean, if, if you'd like to move forward with the original motion, if you ask me, I'll withdraw my motion.
I would like to move, I, I, don't we have to do the vote?
Well, if, what I'm, if you're not going to vote in favor of my motion, then I'll just simply withdraw it.
You're still in favor of the original motion?
I'm still in favor of the original motion.
I withdraw my substitute motion.
Got it, so then we need to vote on the original motion, right? Got it. Okay, okay, please cast your votes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the discussion.
Motion passed unanimously. Okay, moving on to the last item of this evening, D-2 fiscal year 2018-19 third quarter financial report. And our finance director, Mike Sylvia, will introduce the item. Welcome, Mike. Oh, I don't think you're on. Push the button there. Is that it?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And good evening, City Council. This item is the fiscal year 18-19 third quarter report. It does provide a summary in comparison of general fund budget to actual results. The report includes proposed operating and capital budget adjustments through the third quarter, and the general fund revenues and expenditures are consistent with budgetary expectations for this time period. Significant amounts of cash receipts aren't received evenly throughout the year, so we wouldn't expect to be at 75% at this time. There are seven budget adjustments requested, as explained in detail in Exhibit 2 on Page 8 of the Agenda Report. None of the adjustments have a significant overall impact on the general fund or the other funds. The recommendation from staff is to receive and file the fiscal year 2018-19 third quarter financial report and adopt the resolution for the city amending the operating capital budgets. I'm available for questions if need be.
Councilmember Green, did you have a question? Or is that from last time?
No, I just pushed it, actually.
Okay.
I just wanted to thank you for your amazing report, and I move that we accept city, the staff's recommendation to receive and file fiscal year 2018-19 third quarter financial report.
Councilmember Rigby.
I will second the motion, and thank you very much.
We appreciate that, we appreciate your quick report. We did read it all anyway before we got here, so thank you so much. So, okay, cast your votes. The motion passes unanimously, which brings us to our oral communications. We have 12 speakers tonight, so I'm thinking in light of the time, we may be able, limit everybody to two minutes, if that would be agreeable to everybody? If I limit that to two minutes, do you, are you okay with that? Okay, so we'll limit you to two minutes, and what I'll do is I'll call, I'll call three of you, I'll call you one, and we'll come up to the microphone, and the other two will be waiting over here so that we can move along quickly, okay? So our first is Stephen Makoff is our first one, followed by Joshua Tienda, followed by Julianne Lodge. Welcome.
Am I on?
You're on, welcome, sir.
Thank you very much. My name is Steve Makoff, and I am a board member of the KIM Center for Social Balance, a not-for-profit organization. I'm here today to introduce you to the KIM Center and inspire your support. Our goal is to create gender equity in the workplace by educating and galvanizing communities around measurable actions that address the discrimination obstructing women's success. Workplace gender equity is about economic and social prosperity for men and women and children. Research shows that San Diego County's productivity could increase by $23 billion in 10 years. Every growing industry, from biotech to environmental conservation, could benefit financially and strategically, and the military also stands to gain since many service members consider leaving the service because of the employment challenges of their wives face as primary parents. Furthermore, we could get ahead of several prevalent social issues, including homelessness and domestic violence. The KIM Center is implementing five strategic, five strategies to achieve county-wide workplace gender equity. One, our Gender Equity Collaborative, which is a network including businesses, governments, and individual leaders. Two, an online information center. Three, research to provide benchmarks and metrics for the county. Four, a consultant service to help companies and agencies. And five, mentoring and internships for women and girls from under-resourced communities. I look forward to reaching out to each of you to share more about the KIM Center's mission and activities, in hopes that we can rally together to place San Diego County solidly at the national forefront of economic and social prosperity. Thank you for your time, and I made it under two minutes.
You did, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joshua Tienda, followed by Julianne Lodge, followed by Dania Perez.
Then two minutes, two minutes, I will be, have to run right to fast one. So, quickly, council members, mayor, we just had a shooting here in Poway, and it impacted a lot of, specifically of the Jewish members of our community, but we got to understand that this didn't came in a vacuum. There was under, something under, something underlying behind it, and that is antisemitism. And now, the two traits of antisemitism is cyclical and it's wide spectrum. I mean, cyclical, it, it, it comes and goes, but never goes away. And its wide spectrum is, it comes from all sides. It doesn't just come from one side of the political spectrum. Right there, this happened in Belgium, it's similar to the propaganda that Nazis used for their, their pieces. And this is another piece, which was just published in the New York Times of all places, and which is also similar to the antisemitic traits, tropes that were published. You see the acts, allied powers, and the Jews behind them. And one of the antisemitic tropes is the Jews controlling the world, and you're here to see another cartoon of, of Mark Zuckerberg, sorry, that was all my, I had more to share.
Sorry, thanks, Joshua. No, antisemitism is not acceptable. So Julianne Lodge, followed by Dania Perez, followed by Christian.
Thank you very much for allowing me and my students to speak to you this evening. My name is Julianne Lodge, and I'm a teacher at Alta Vista High School. Every year, I Every year, I allow my students to identify a concern that they have about their community and work on finding a solution for it. This year, what seemed to be on my students' minds was how much contact they were having with the police, which many felt was excessive. Students then conducted research. They wrote their own questions, gathered data, and then analyzed it. They also did research on best policing practices so that they could offer some solutions to their concerns. And the result is this presentation. And I did email it on Friday, and somehow there was a glitch. So you have it on paper, and we won't be able to see it up on the wall. They shared it last Friday with representatives of the Vista sheriffs, who graciously agreed to come to our school for their presentation. My students are learning how to use appropriate channels and local government to solve a problem that they have identified. Thank you in advance for this learning experience for them. I'm deeply grateful to the members of the community who have shown them that their voices and perspectives deserve a place at the table and that our city institutions will welcome them. Thank you very much.
Daniela Perez, followed by Christian, followed by Hunter Lightso.
Okay, and I think the names are out of order, but they're in order, so I'll just have them come up. If that's all right. I did have their cards numbered and the number that they're.
Yeah, they're all numbered here. Okay, just say your name when you come up, and then I'll find your card. Okay?
Hi, my name is Daniela.
What is your name?
Daniela.
Daniela, okay, you're in order, okay.
Hello, my name is Daniela Perez. Thank you for letting me present today. Improving the relationship between Vista teens and Vista sheriffs. Research and presentation by Alta Vista 12th grade students. Who are we? We are Alta Vista High School. We are negative stereotype about us, but Alta Vista is not a school for students with behavior problems. It's a school for students who fall behind in high school in various reasons. About 25 of Alta's students are teen parents, and many students struggle with homelessness, anxiety, depression, and other family problems. And this is why we need an alternative school. About 10% of Alta Vista High School students are involved with, in the criminal justice system. Students struggle with a stable life and obstacles outside of school. Why we're here today. Our data demonstrate excessive contact between police and teens in the north side of Vista. Excessive police contact leads to lack of cooperation and trust between our community and law enforcement. Lack of cooperation between law enforcements in our community makes everyone less safe. Neighborhood represents in our research, neighborhood most represented in our research is top side area, the foothill area, and the Vista Village, Santa Fe area. These communities are heavily populated with immigrants, and majority is a strong police presence with the communities with the largest reputation in the graph. Age, according to the results, 79% of students surveyed are minors. 21% are legal adults because they're 18 or 21 years old. However, contact with law enforcement may occur when they're minors. There's a lot of contact happening between law enforcements and minors. Parents might not be aware with these actions towards their children.
Time is up, thank you.
Hi, my name is Christian Simono, and thank you for allowing me to be here today. Race and ethnicity. The results show that a majority of students at Alta are Latino, Latinas, or have other minority status. Police activity in our area mostly affects one group, minorities. We wonder how this data would look if the survey were given to students in an area that is predominantly minority status. How safe do you feel in your neighborhood? The results show that the majority, 58% of people, feel somewhat safe in their communities. 6% don't feel safe at all. There is a desire and need for more security and safety. How do you feel about the number of police patrolling the community? Just over half of students feel that there are enough or not enough police, but just under half feel that there are too many. The feeling of surveillance can be the leading reason why some students might feel that there are too many police. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Hunter Lightso, and thank you so much for having me here. So, people questioned by the police while coming to or from school. Almost half of Alta Vista students have been stopped or questioned by the police while on their way to or from school. This may be because we are not in a school during regular school hours, as our school has shorter hours than the bigger high schools. Our students also struggle with transportation, getting their children to school, helping younger siblings with parents, while parents work, or other problems. And then, people questioned by the police at any time in Vista. Approximately 2/3 of students at Alta Vista have been stopped or questioned by the police in Vista. When teens are stopped publicly, it makes them look bad in front of their own community. This can also create repercussions with life at school or at home. When teens get stopped, it can be traumatic experience that forms their opinion of law enforcement for life. Photography of minors. Approximately 1/3 of students answered that they have been photographed by police. We are being photographed and recorded into a system that labels us as criminals without us being tried or convicted of anything. Police should respect the privacy of minors, and the parents need to know if their children are being photographed. Searches without consent. A third of students at Alta Vista have been searched without their consent. Students may be unlawfully searched if they are not giving consent to the searches. Most students don't know about the permission that a police officer needs to search someone. And have you ever been stopped or questioned for something that did not lead to the conviction of a crime? 1/3 of the students in Alta Vista have been stopped by the police in a case that did not lead to a conviction of a crime. This could be because of an officer's implicit bias or even racially profiling a student due to their appearance, the side of town they are in, or what they are wearing. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Jose Manuel. Handcuffed teens in our neighborhoods, the data shows that about.
Wait, what's your name, please?
Jose Manuel, Jose Manuel.
Okay.
Handcuffed teens in our neighborhoods, the data shows that about 1/3 of our students surveyed have been handcuffed for something that did not lead to a conviction of a crime. Police tackling teens. The graph shows that 10% have been tackled by the police for something that did not lead to a conviction of a crime. Teens are getting tackled at a rate of 1 out of 10. This shows that minors are having too much violent physical contact from the police. Tackling someone for committing a violent crime or endangering others is understandable, but tackling someone who has not been, who has not been violent seems excessive. An experience like that leads to a breakdown of trust, and the end word of these experiences spreads fast throughout the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Marizian Montes. Racial profiling, about 1/3 of Alta Vista students think that they have been stopped or questioning due to racial profiling, while 1/4 of the students are unsure. Racial profiling is difficult to prove, but the way the community feels they are treated is important because it is a trust issue. The Constitution and the Bill of Rights guarantee everyone's equal treatment under the law. Do you feel that a stronger police presence would make your neighborhood safe? 75% of the students said no to having more police in their neighborhood. Instead of more law enforcement, we should train the police. We have to build better relationships with the people they are policing. If you or someone else in your household had an emergency, would you call for help? There are more than 2/3 that would call, but 1/3 wouldn't. If there's something like domestic violence or someone is at risk of being seriously hurt, then it is important to have, to have the trust that police will handle the situation and not discriminate against the people who call. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Heidi Jimenez. Would you call the police if your neighbor needed help? About 2/3 said that they would call the police to help their neighbors if they were in trouble, and about 1/3 said they wouldn't call the police if their neighbors were in trouble. Again, everyone should feel comfortable calling police. Someone can get seriously hurt if no one calls for help when it's really needed. Public safety. The data shows that 1/3 of the students that took the survey answered that they would call the authorities if they witnessed a neighborhood public safety issue. However, the majority would not call the authorities to report a crime. If the community doesn't report crimes, then the crime rates can rise and affect innocent people. A community that tries to solve its own problems is not a safe community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Mary Ramirez. Thank you for letting me be here to present. Would your or a family member's immigration status make you feel uncomfortable calling law enforcement for help? About 1/3 of teens responded that they would feel uncomfortable calling the police for help due to their own or a family member's immigration status. Everyone should be able to call or seek for help no matter what their immigration status is. Because the city of Vista has joined the Trump administration lawsuit against California for sanctuary laws, there is confusion and mistrust as to whether it is safe for mixed-status families to call for help. Conclusion. Our research has led to a question, are students in our community inherently more criminal than other teens? Or are they over-policed? Teens might react to contact with police by panicking and acting impulsively. It can lead to escalation resulting in a teen getting physically hurt or a criminal record. The frequency of police contact with youth occurring in Vista for minor things creates distrust for police and has long-term consequences for the teen and our community. We have some requests for the Vista sheriffs.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Maria. Thank you for allowing us to be here today. Recognition. We would like the City Council of Vista to recognize the overpolicing of youth in the north side of Vista as a concern. Community input. Vista sheriffs should have regular meetings and input from neighbors regarding what they see as priorities, issues for law enforcement. They can also provide more education to the community about how to react if they are stopped so that situations don't get out of control. Citizen oversight. A citizen oversight committee that represents every district in Vista should be established. Training. We would like more training for the sheriffs in Vista and de-escalation techniques so that encounters with teens don't turn negative or violent. We would also like sheriffs to get more education and training about the Constitution and the Bill of Rights. Thank you for your time, and we hope to build a better relationship with police in order to keep our neighborhood safe. Thank you again for allowing us to be here today.
Thank you. And that is our last speaker. With that, I will go to our remarks, and I will start with Councilmember Contreras.
It was a really long meeting, but it was a good one. We had awesome discussion up here. And I thank everybody for coming to the council meeting and sharing, you know, their perspectives, their experiences, why they think a certain park needs something. You know, this is definitely what we want to see in our community. This, this is the house of the community. So please, don't let this be the first or last time that you step into this building. There's a lot that we can do together. And I want to thank my colleagues for always bringing up really good points when we have these discussions. So that's, that's all I have to say. Enjoy the rest of your night. It's kind of late for Taco Tuesday, but I think I might try.
Councilmember Green.
Yes, it's never too late for Taco Tuesday, so that's good news. Thank everybody for showing up. Thank you guys who spoke. One thing is perception is reality. One thing I can argue with from a student perspective is your feelings. Apologize if you feel that way. We want to do everything we can as a council to keep you safe. And I know that all my councilmembers work really hard to do that. So thank you for showing up. Thanks for your presentation, children. That was awesome, and I know a lot of work was put into it, so thank you. One other thing I want to do is give a big shout out to the front counter in my planning department here in the city of Vista. I had the joy of sitting in the front area for about two hours this week. And the people who come up there, Robbie, Nixie, and a few others up there are just prime time. And you have developers going in there, some of them just plopping plans and complaining. And our staff is able to just turn them around with a smile, and they walk away with their paperwork feeling accomplished. So I do think we have one of the best planning departments, one of the best front counters in the entire county. And you are our first point of contact with our citizens. So those smiles at that front counter are appreciated. They're seen by your council, and thank you so much. So that's all I got. Have a great night.
I second that. Deputy Mayor.
I thirded all of that. I also want to thank all the members of the community who came to speak tonight on various issues. And I want to thank my colleagues again for the spirited discussion, and I hope that they understood the intent that I had for the best outcome. And I'll second your appreciation of our staff for all of their good work, and our sheriff's deputies for their good work protecting our community. Thank you.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to say thank you to everybody who came out tonight to speak to us. We love hearing your conversation, your commitment, your opinions. And when I go to Sacramento and I'm talking before the legislature committees, or I am at the Board of Supervisors, where I've been a couple of times lately talking before them, you wouldn't notice, but I am really nervous, and I stumble over my words talking to them. And I have to say, none of you did that here tonight. You all really came up here. You said what you had to say. You were very eloquent. You were very articulate. You were very poised, and I'm very proud of you for doing that. And I appreciate that you came out to talk to us tonight about your concerns with the sheriff's deputies. So I want to say thank you for doing that. And always a thank you to staff for everything that you do for our community and for us. So with that, I thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I have, I have some announcements here to make. I always feel like a newscaster when I do these. So thank you to the volunteers who helped in the annual Creek-to-Bay cleanup on April 27. Volunteers picked up over 12,000, no, 1,200 pounds of trash and 22 pounds of recyclables along Buena Creek and South Vista. We appreciate our volunteers' help in keeping our creeks clean. So thank you to, I'm afraid of you helped, but thank you to all the people who did help do that. San Diego County's Bike-to-Work Day is Thursday, May 16. You can drop by Vista Civic Center's pit stop in the parking lot from 6:00 in the morning until 9:00 in the morning for water, prizes, and fun before heading into work or to school, and maybe even on your bike. Also, on Thursday, May 16, get help with your computer, tablet, or phone at the Vista Library's tech drop-in from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. Bring your own device or use one of the libraries, and no registration is required for that. The Wave Water Park opens for the summer season on Saturday, May 25. That's Memorial Weekend, isn't it? The day before Memorial Day, yeah. Ticket information is online at thewawaterpark.com. And we are excited to have the Chambers Annual Strawberry Festival downtown on Sunday, May 26. So you can stop by the city booth in front of the Alvo Playhouse to learn what's going on in Vista and for a chance to win some fun prizes. So festival information is online at vistas strawberryfest.com for that. So with that, I'll turn it to my City Manager, and he probably has some announcements, too.
Thank you, Mayor, just a few.
Other newscasters, like with newscasters.
Just a few. The city updated its Measure Z website on the city website. So you go to cityofvista.com. And Measure Z is the proposition that allowed for 11 medical marijuana dispensaries in the city. And so if you're more interested, if you're interested on what's going on, we have a map there that shows all 11 locations of the proposed dispensaries, as well as a spreadsheet that shows the tracking status in terms of where they're at in the process, whether it's permitting with the city, state licensing to occupancy, and then ultimately, business license and opening. So that is on the website for anybody that's interested in finding out more. The other one is that on Memorial Day, May 27, the American Legion, the Vista American Legion Post, is going to have a Day of Remembrance ceremony at 10:00 a.m. in the parking lot here on Alta Vista. And it's a great ceremony. If you haven't been there before, it's, it's very touching. And then lastly, city offices and the library will be closed on Memorial Day. So we won't be open, and trash will be delayed one day that week.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
How about our city attorney? Do you have any announcements tonight?
Not tonight, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, how about our city clerk, Kathy? Assistant City Clerk, Claire? Nope. Okay, with that, I think we're ready to adjourn. But we're going to adjourn tonight's meeting to honor the memory of a longtime resident, a Vista resident, Dee Holloway, who passed away on April 28. And she, her husband Ron, they do a lot for Alta Vista Gardens. And so she's a mother and a grandmother, and she was way too young. So we're going to honor tonight, or honor her tonight by adjourning the meeting in her honor. So with that, at 8:20, we are adjourned.